Okay, so we're gonna start this morning's meeting. Thank you very much for attending. It is a special meeting of council, but I don't think there'll be any decisions made. It's more about sharing information. So some councillors, I know, have to go and then come back. So it'll be a very fluid meeting today. We acknowledge the land on which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Any declarations of conflict of interest? Okay, so if you look at the agenda, we have number four items, bylaw reading presentations, second reading of the remuneration bylaw, and the budget introduction, that's CAO, and then we'll go to the departmental budget overview presentations. Tracy, will you be putting that up on the screen for us, for anyone that's looking or viewing this? Yeah. But the agenda, the presentation, CD, is, okay. Okay, I need approval of the agenda. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Councillor Matard. Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Item four, second reading of the remuneration bylaw attached. Do you want to read that off, CAO Eleanor Mohammed?
Thank you, worship. I amend the City of Charlottetown Remuneration Bylaw, number 2021-rmn-01, to implement the recommendations from the Remuneration and Allowances Commission as outlined in their report as presented to council on October 12th, 2023. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown Remuneration Bylaw be read a second time and that the bylaw now be approved and adopted. Moved by Councillor John McAlire and seconded by Councillor Trevor McKinnon.
Shall it carry? Okay, so I have one. Councillor Dran, nay. So it's five to one. Okay, Councillor. opposed. And. Two. McCabe. Okay, am I missing someone? Absent. Okay, so I'll turn it over to our CAO Eleanor Mohammed. But just before I do that, I just want to thank the staff for putting together these presentations as a, in preparation for a 24-25 budget, and also outlining the priorities for 24-25, and I'd say in the next several years thereafter. So I'll turn it over to the CAO Eleanor Mohammed.
Thank you, worship. We're just pulling up our slides here. If you could just progress right into, can I, I can't control them, can I?
Yes, you can.
Can I? Oh, with a clicker. Oh, well done.
You need to get a pointer at the top.
So I'm just hitting the play. Okay. Thanks, Richard. So I also want to thank staff for where we've arrived today. It's actually taken about a month of work to get us here and compile this. It's a wonderful presentation. I think we're pretty excited to be able to present this before council today and the public as well. And really, the purpose of why we're all here, this council is very interested in showing their transparency and accountability and building trust within the city. In doing so, having a great budget process, and in this case, what's going on is, at the front of the budget process, we're, as administration and council committees, looking for council as a body, their direction on where they want to go with this budget in terms of themes and any new policies, bylaws, and services that they might be looking for. It's also a really great opportunity, once a year, for the city to provide a snapshot of what's going on at the city and what some of the successes that we've had, as well as some of the challenges that we're facing, along with outlining some of the priorities within each department. Just to bring everyone on the same page before we enter into this budget process. One thing that I will say throughout the day here with council and the discussion that will be going on amongst staff as well, there'll be new ideas that are brought up, and I want to recognize that council and the process of budget is a process where new ideas are raised, but those new ideas sometimes don't make it to the end of the budget because we have to prioritize things, and there's trade-offs as we move through things. So just to set that expectation today, council sets the direction and the themes here of where we're going. Maybe in some of the departments, they've said they want to prioritize that, but those priorities may change based on what these discussions are today, and then also what some of the discussions happen with the committees in terms of getting into greater detail of whether we can pull things off or not. So just to provide a broader idea of what this budget process looks like, about a month ago, we, administration presented the budget process through to Finance Committee, and that just made its way to council in the minutes in early November here. We also started a public engagement process online where we had an online survey where the public could provide feedback in what they think the priorities of budget should be for this year. And we've also put out the call for grant applications for consideration in this year's budget process as well. That third box there and on the top, the Budget Workshop in November, that's today, that's where we are. And then moving forward throughout December and January will be council committee meetings regarding the budget, where we're going to take these themes and priorities and really get down into some of the details. In January or February, we've got a little flexibility there, depending on how these timelines go for all of us. There'd be a finance, a special finance committee with a consolidated budget there that's discussed, and then that would go through to council. And once we have that draft consolidated budget, that then is made available to the public in accordance with the Municipal Government Act within a public meeting format. And then finally, we're targeting, hopefully, to have the budget fully approved late February. So in looking at our budget workshop, there's really some overarching goals that council is striving for, which is making sure that they're implementing their strategic plan in terms of guiding principles, the 10 commitments in the strategic plan, and also, while considering all these different budget items, considering the four pillars in the strategic plan. As the strategic plan says, council will be looking at citywide needs, but also keeping in mind what's important within their respective jurisdiction within the city. And then it's also that opportunity, and the goals are for council to identify any new policies or services or programs to be considered in this budget. And at the very end of today, we're hoping that we'll have top five priorities for the city to focus on for 2024, 2025. So this slide here is just a reminder of the four pillars that actually are in our strategic plan. The first one is community building and place-making to enhance Charlottetown is a great place to live as and as a destination for visitors. Governance and civic engagement to create a high performance and responsive local government. Inclusive government or economic growth to foster inclusive growth related to, related in terms of people and economic sectors. And infrastructure and environment to address infrastructure challenges in our growing city and the issues arising from climate change adaptation and mitigation. So that's really the lens of decisions being made today through our strategic plan that council will be focusing through. This here is our agenda for today. We do have a day two tomorrow. Today's focus is more on the departments coming in and making presentations. And then tomorrow is focused on external stakeholders. There will be a morning break and a lunch break and an afternoon break as well. I'm happy to answer any questions about the process before we jump into a staff presentation.
Any questions? You're fine? Good. Okay, so we'll start with Richard McKeown, manager at the Water and Wastewater Utility.
All right. Good morning. Usually water and sewers left till the end, but today we get to do the best first. So who we are, the Water and Sewer Corporation is a separate, yet wholly owned entity of the city, providing water and wastewater services in the Charlottetown area and beyond. So it is important to recognize, thank you very much, Tracy, that the Water and Sewer Utility, it is a separate corporation from the city. Our revenue streams are separate, and all of our expenses are kept separate from the general city corporation. So the city corporation, the bulk of the revenue comes from taxes, whereas the Water and Sewer Corporation, all of our revenue comes from the rates that we charge to the residents of Charlottetown and any of our other customers. So what we do, the Charlottetown Water and Sewer Utility, we provide water supply, water distribution, wastewater collection, and wastewater treatment. So our water supply, we have four wellfields that are all outside of the City of Charlottetown's boundaries. So each one of those wellfields has four or five large wells, and then we pump that water into the City of Charlottetown, and then it goes through distribute, the distribution system. The distribution system are the pipes that are in the ground and delivering the water to our customers. After our customers use the water, we then collect that water, we now call it wastewater, through our wastewater collection system. There are 40 lift stations throughout the city, and there's 260 kilometers of sewer mains collecting all of that wastewater in the city. And then it goes to our wastewater treatment plant located at 18 Riverside Drive. It's a multimillion dollar facility that cleans that water before we release it into the harbor. And that service is provided to the City of Charlottetown, the town of Stratford, and all of the septic systems in Eastern PEI. All of that waste also comes to our facility. So important to recognize that we provide that service to half of Prince O'Reilly Island. And our achievements, so something through the city council, this graph, as I explain it to you, is remarkable, the achievements that we've done on water supply within the city. So, wrong one. Okay, so this graph shows us the annual consumption of water in the City of Charlottetown since shortly after amalgamation going through to the present day. So back at amalgamation, we were using about 6 million cubic meters of water per day. And you can see that this blue line is our actual consumption that we were using each year, and it's steadily increasing to this straight line coming across here. That's the amount of water that we are able to provide to our residents. So you can see that we were steadily increasing up until around 2008, 2010. And at this time, in the year 2000, we started planning for a new wellfield, and by 2008, we recognized that we really needed a new wellfield. At this point in our history, water supply was actually a hindrance to development. We were not able to commit to a new subdivision being developed and being able to supply them with water. So it was a really a challenge for the city, and we needed to bring a new wellfield online. And there were conditions put in place for us to be able to bring that new wellfield online. We were working with the province, and they said you can bring a new wellfield online, but in order to do that, we need to see your commitment to water conservation into the future. So this is also when we started water conservation programs while we were still working at developing this new wellfield. I'm gonna start that pointer again, or maybe I can speak to it. So the blue line is our water consumption from the Winter River. There are conservation measures you can start.
Oh, sorry.
There are conservation measures. You can see that they're coming in here. This line is our new, when we brought our new wellfield online. So our conservation measures, we can see that our water consumption, we've been able to bring it down to a level back before the year 2000. So our water consumption through our conservation measures, and a big one was universal metering. So now all of our customers are metered, and everybody pays per usage of the water, and we're now able to supply it with our new Milton Vale wellfield. Our water supply ability has increased here. So now we do have room for increased water supply. We're in a good spot for water supply. I've always been very hesitant with sharing this good news story because each year the water consumption goes up and down a little bit, but now I'm very confident. When I look at the amount of water that we're using each day, I can see that the residents of Charlottetown are using much less water than we did back in the year 2008 and 2010. So it's incredible what our residents have done with the support and encouragement from city council with measures, water conservation promotion, and also working with the province. So another big measure here was you can no longer buy a high-flow toilet or a high-flow shower in the province of Prince O'Reilly Island. All of our new fixtures are low-flow fixtures, and really a big push for water conservation in this province. So very good news on our water supply. And also on the wastewater side, this graph shows the number of discharge events out into the Charlottetown Harbor. So anytime we were releasing raw sewage into the harbor, about 50 times per year before all of our past efforts, so back 2011, 2013, every year there were about 50 days where we were discharging raw wastewater into the Charlottetown Harbor. And then through principally the efforts of our combined sewer separation projects in both Brighton and Spring Park, we are now down to about five events in the year where we still have very high rainfall events and snowfall events, where we're not able to handle all of the water that gets generated into our wastewater collection system. Because even though the system is now designed not to accept stormwater, there's still stormwater that gets into the system. We still have some residents who may have their own sump pumps connected to the system. So in like an April timeframe, we might have heavy rainfall and a snowfall event. There's still an opportunity for us to be seeing too much water in our wastewater collection system and presents challenges for us. So those were our achievements. We're doing great on water supply and wastewater treatment. Our challenges come when we look at the age of the infrastructure, our water distribution and our wastewater collection. So we have water mains that were put in the ground in 1888, and we have over 21 kilometers of pipe in that age, 10 kilometers. So we have more than a third of our water mains that are more than 50 years old. In our wastewater collection system, we have more than half of our sewer mains that are more than 50 years old. So we need to look at upgrading that infrastructure. This is our water main breaks per year, and this is where we start to see the implications of our aging infrastructure. So each year, on average, we're seeing more and more water main breaks, and that puts our ability to supply water to our customers at risk and can result in precautionary boil water advisories. So our programs and levels of service proposed for 2024, 2025, we are working with Public Works on improving that infrastructure. So it's whole street infrastructural renewal in cooperation with Public Works. That's where we go in and we look after the water and sewer mains on a street. Public Works looks after the stormwater and the road surface. And you've seen those projects developing over the past few years. Wastewater collection system, customer engagement. So the challenge, some of the challenges in our wastewater collection system are when our customers are putting things into the system that they shouldn't be putting into the system. The only things that should be going into our system, pee, poo, toilet paper, and then wastewater. And when we have other things going into the system, it causes problems for our customers and our collection system and increased costs of maintenance. So we have somebody who will be working with their customers to ensure that they're not putting things in principally fat oils and greases and maybe high BOD materials that they shouldn't be disposed of into our wastewater collection system. Also, wellfield protection, we're always looking to ensure the quality of our water and working on wellfield protection. And continue to deliver award-winning tap water. Again, I want to remind you that this year Charlottetown was awarded the best tasting tap water in all of Atlantic Canada, so we want to continue to do that. And we also want to continue to work at improving the water quality in Charlottetown Harbor, which means working on reducing those discharge events out into the harbor. And enhancing our customer billing and development application experience, about 40% of our customers are now using our online billing. We still are billing, sending bills out in the mail to a number of our customers. We want to keep to encourage our customers so that it's a better experience for them, and they can see their billing history better online, working with them. It's more cost effective for us. And also working with planning on the development And also working with planning on the development process, better integration of the planning permitting process with the Water and Sewer Utility permitting process. And further efforts to modernize our work order management system, so that's our own internal jobs where we're doing work for our customers or maintenance on our system. So historically, that's been a very heavily paper-based system. We are getting started with turning that into an online system, and we're doing that with our metering right now. We want to turn that into all of our jobs becoming an online work order management system. Top five departmental priorities, human resource management to ensure a skilled workforce for the future. So as the world is experiencing challenges finding workers and making sure that we're going to be able to continue to provide this service into the future, it's no different for the Water and Sewer Utility. We're having recruitment challenges, and we also see an aging workforce. More and more of our employees are approaching the age where they will be retiring, and we need employees coming in to learn these trades. Inflow and infiltration reduction to improve wastewater management. That's the stormwater, the rain that I mentioned getting into our system and causing problems for us to be able to ensure that all of the wastewater gets treated in Charlottetown. And then protecting existing water supply sites and investigating future locations. So even though I showed a very pretty picture on the water supply side, it takes decades for us to develop a new well field, and I think it's much more prudent for us to be looking for that next well field site now as we are experiencing growth in the city and to know where it is, and to start to be able to develop that site and look at protecting it, have our eye on the future. The utility works in decades and centuries when we're doing our planning, so we really do need to look for that next location for a well field. And improve our water leak detection capabilities. One of the spots where we do use water in our system that isn't beneficial is when we have leaks in our system. We need to work on being better at detecting those leaks in our system. And continue to seek funding to assist with infrastructure renewal. So historically, the utility has always relied on provincial and federal funding to help with our infrastructure projects, and that presents a significant challenge for us, particularly these days where we're not seeing any funding opportunities at the moment. And we've typically been able to find sixty-six or seventy-five percent funding for our infrastructure projects to develop new infrastructure or to renew our infrastructure. And if those programs don't come along, it will have implications for our rates, but it is something that we do need to look at, how we are going to fund our future infrastructure So are there any questions on water and sewer?
I want to say, Mr. Chair, a very good presentation and lots of possibilities. Counselor Beck.
Yeah, Richard, thanks. Yeah, I'm on, I'm in, uh... Counselor McCabe's spot.
Okay, go ahead there. Counselor McCabe, I mean Counselor Beck.
Put me on, put me on Julie's.
Ah, you are.
No, oh, there we go. Okay, all right. Um, Richard, what's the shelf life on, you talked about a third of our water mains more than fifty years old, half of our sewers are more than fifty years old. What's the shelf life in those?
Well, fifty years is often the design, when we put it in the ground, we hope that it will last fifty years. So we have some pipes, the early pipes, eighteen eighty-eight, some of them, when we look at them, are still in good shape. They're over a hundred years old, and some of them, when we're down and dealing with a main break, we see that they are not in good condition.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Are you gonna, Mayor Brown?
Yeah, you go right ahead there.
You sure?
Yeah, I have you down.
Thank you, Richard, for your presentation. I do have a question in line with Counselor Beck's question, and it's more curiosity. So you indicated there's about a third of the water mains are more than fifty years old and sewer mains. Generally, what region of Charlottetown would that be in? And, you know, I guess I'm looking at the replacement of that. I'd have to suspect if it was in the greater Charlottetown area in the city core, might be more challenging to replace due to the infrastructure that surrounds it versus possibly if it was a little further out. So just want to get some context on where some of this might be located and the relevancy to the cost associated with replacing such infrastructure in that region.
Yes, so as you can imagine, the older pipe is in the older part of downtown Charlottetown, and then as you, as we've developed and moved out into the neighboring bedroom communities, and then further out into the new development, the new development is the newer pipe. As you would expect, that's what we see with the age of the pipe, and yes, more challenges. And that's why we have typically, we're working with Public Works. When they identify a street that needs to be redone, then that's an opportunity for us to work together and get those streets taken care of. And it's a balance between where we are seeing our needs to replace infrastructure and Public Works recognizes a need to do work on that street. So that's why we're working together to try and reduce those costs, because to do our work, we have to cut through the asphalt up above.
Counselor Grant.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown, and thank you, Manager Richard, and Justin, who sits on the committee as well. When I, when I look at the numbers here, it says twenty-one thousand meters. That is a hundred years or more. Um, you know, I, I don't think we really looked at that during the committee meetings over the last couple of years, and, you know, that's a serious, very serious statistic there that maybe we should put up on top of our agendas. And when we go back to our committees, I think I'll have a discussion with you to see where we can start. I mean, if you're looking over at a hundred years old pipe in the ground, you know, we're gonna have to dig deep and see what we can do for that. But, you know, thank you for your report. It was very informative. Learned some new statistics here ourselves today, so kind of look forward to going back to the next meeting and see what we can do. Thank you.
We are here to help council understand, and again, I, I'm very excited about the day that is coming before you. Happy that I could go first, but a real opportunity to share with all of you, to see what we do. The achievements that council has done, again, I really want to highlight that, the things that city has done with respect to water supply and wastewater treatment. Though, those are amazing things that this city has accomplished with the support of city council, and they were not easy decisions. Those were multi-million dollar decisions that were put before you, and you accepted the challenge, and we are in a much better spot now with respect to water supply. Again, that was a challenging time in our history, but you came forward and met that. As well as the wastewater discharges, that was very challenging for us as well. I mean, there were criminal orders against the city of Charlottetown and myself that we needed to stop doing that. Every two months, I had to write a letter to the Department of Fisheries and Oceans explaining what we were doing to reduce the number of discharges into the harbor, and it's an amazing story now. There, it is now possible to fish oysters off of the banks of Victoria Park because of your efforts, and that would not have been the case for the last possibly two hundred years. It is an amazing achievement for this city. So I thank you for your past support and look forward to that future support as we start to look at our aging infrastructure.
And there's no problems when we're down at the Charlottetown Wharf. Clean water. John McLaire, Counselor McLaire.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Richard, for your great, great presentation. It's certainly helpful for me. Just, just wondered, just, just comment, if you could, just briefly. I'm guessing what I think I understand well field protection to be, and if you could just kind of elaborate, and then talked about improvement in the Charlottetown harbor water, just kind of wonder generally what you kind of mean by that and where you're maybe trying to get it. And then the last one, you know, the next well field takes decades, you're in a centuries kind of thing. Any, any, any indication where that next well field may be?
Yes, thank you for the question. So I'll start with the well field. So in two thousand and two, we did a well field investigation looking at areas throughout the city and identifying potential locations. So we will go back to that study and look at it, but that two thousand and two study identified our Miltonvale well field site as one of the potential locations. So we would start with that study, because the study looks at areas where we can, where there's very little development, and you can safely develop a new well field. And typically, that's not in downtown Charlottetown, it's outside of Charlottetown. But you look for areas where there's lots of forest cover, and those are the areas that we target for water supply. And on the harbor protection, again, that's us not releasing untreated wastewater into the harbor. And again, it's much, much better than it used to be, but it is working on our system. So we get water into our collection system. It comes in through the tops of our manholes, so it's important that we design our streets properly so that our sanitary system isn't acting as the stormwater system. And the pipes, they're in the ground, so groundwater can get into them when they're old, and the gaskets between the pipes or the pipes are broken, and sump pumps pumping into the system. So that's how we improve water quality in the harbor, is not having those wastewater discharges.
Yeah, no, great news, Richard. I know that Counselor Twill was awarded the Inshore Fisheries Award for shutting down the Naval Keys outflow and was it the Riverview Estates sewage plant? Was that right, Counselor Twill?
It was the shellfish industry.
Thank you.
Shellfish industry, worked really closely with them, and that was, I think at the time, correct me if I'm wrong, an eighteen million dollar separation of the sanitary sewer stormwater.
Yeah.
In through the Spring Park, in through the Spring Park area, tomorrow through Desperse Pumping Station, as you know, Desperse Park, all the ways through, and then Summer Street. And it just kept going, correct me if I'm wrong, right up to the university. Richard?
You are absolutely correct.
I think you were the chair, Mr., Counselor Twill, yeah, that's right. And we, the first one to shut down was the Brighton, Brighton combined stormwater.
That's correct. We did the... Did the Brighton, but then for some reason, we didn't seem to continue on until the intervention of the shellfish industry, because it affected their industry. It kept shutting them down, so it was a project that was worth its weight in gold.
Good news. Counselor McLaire.
Yeah, thank you. Just quickly, Richard, you said the eastern, like there's Stratford in the eastern part, like, can you just share how far that eastern footprint goes or the scope of it? Thank you.
So on Prince Edward Island, there are two wastewater treatment plants that will accept septage from septage haulers, and it's Summerside or Charlottetown. So it's really up to the septage hauler. Typically, I would think whichever one they're closest to, that's the plant they're going to go to. So for Charl, it's, I can't imagine anybody in Surrey looking to go to Summerside, so that's why I say eastern PEI. So the only spots that they can take septage now is to Summerside or Charlottetown, and that's so that the septage is treated. And historically, we used to simply spread septage out onto agricultural fields, but now it has to go to a wastewater treatment plant where it is turned into an exceptional Class A biosolid material, which is what we do at the plant. So we take, take that sludge, we pasteurize it the same way that we pasteurize milk to kill any pathogens in it. All of that sludge is heat-treated to seventy degrees Celsius for thirty minutes so that any potential pathogens in it have been killed before it then goes out onto agricultural land.
Well, Mr. McGeehan, thank you very much. Thank goodness water and wastewater went first. You know, we always think of the bad things, but you made it, gave a new light to it. CIO Eleanor?
Thank you, worship. So I think out of that conversation, I did hear one priority emerge, which was that the upgrade of the hundred-year pipe should be prioritized, and I just want to check in with all of council if that's consensus, that that's where we should be prioritizing.
Yeah.
In this area? Great, thank you.
Okay, the next item, Eleanor, is human resources? Okay, Emily MacLeod.
So who we are? The city of Charlottetown's Human Resources Department assists in propelling the workforce of the city towards efficiency, harmony and progress. In essence, the HR department is the custodian of the city's most valuable assets, its people. By aligning human capital with the city's goals, fostering a positive work culture and ensuring compliance with legal standards, legislation, policy, bylaws and contracts, the HR department is an indispensable force driving the municipality forward with resilience. What we do, so the HR department is entrusted with ensuring that the city not only complies with labor laws and regulations, but that the department also stays up to date on payroll legislation. From payroll management to benefits administration, the HR team handles the intricacies of employee compensation, recruitment, health and safety, pension, labor relations, employee engagement, training and development, and all other employee relations initiatives, all while safeguarding the rights and well-being of the municipal workforce. Some of our achievements to date, the ADP Workforce Now Human Resources Information System and Payroll Platform Upgrade. So we moved from our legacy product, which is people at work and pay at work platforms, to our new Workforce Now Payroll and HRIS system. This is a more efficient use of city resources. It improves in the administrative side of things, and it also allows all of our city's staff to have access to their time off requests, pay stubs, all at the tip of their fingers. It's an app now, and it's a web-based platform, so they can access it on any computer. We've increased our labor management meetings, which has resulted in a reduction in the city's grievances. We relaunched the city's employee engagement survey, and we'll hopefully have those results out to staff shortly. To date this year in two thousand and twenty-three, we've had ninety new hires. That includes permanent, casual, entry-level seasonal and contract. This does not include our returning seasonals. We've implemented a hearing conservation program for our staff. We've launched a new HR Highlights Quarterly Newsletter, and several of our HR department's staff members have obtained designations. CPAHR, so the Chartered Professional in Human Resources, RPR, which is a Registered Professional Recruiter, and the, it's actually PCC, which is a payroll certified, no, Certified Payroll Professional, CPP. Some of the challenges that HR is facing right now, Richard touched on a couple of these items. So attracting top talent, retaining our current staff, and managing with staff shortages. Initiatives, programs and benefits aimed at promoting mental health and well-being, training and development throughout the organization, some forecasted retirements with our aging workforce, that is a concern, HR resources, policies and some health and safety gaps. So our proposed programs and service levels for two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five, recruitment and staffing, employee onboarding platform, a training and development plan for all city staff, employee relations improvements, compensation and benefits review, performance, performance management system, policy development and compliance, some workforce planning, health and safety and health and wellness improvements, employee records and HR systems, labor relations, some contract negotiations, diversity and inclusion initiatives, and retirements, severances and pensions. And out of that, the department's top five priorities would include a training and development officer for the city, a new wellness program, performance management system, a policy analyst and a new job evaluation project. And are there any questions for HR?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, Emily, for your report. I think it is more of a comment, you know, unlike some of our other departments like Water and Sewer and Public Works that are more public-facing, you know, HR is an important department that is, is kind of working behind the scenes and performing very important work relating to the workforce of the city of Charlottetown to provide the staffing, training and, you know, opportunities for the staff, but also dealing with challenges that need to be addressed as well in, in certain areas. So, you know, for me, it's, it's been great to be on the committee for the past year and seeing all the, all the work that is done kind of behind the scenes, and it's not always at the forefront. But I certainly, you know, working closely with Emily, very supportive of the... But I certainly, you know, working closely with Emily, very supportive of the, of the work they're doing and the initiatives that they're bringing forward. And hopefully, as a group here, we can determine, you know, some of the top priorities for the department, because it does have a direct impact on all of our areas with all of our staffing and our workforce. And we want the best for them for both from a health and safety perspective. So I'm very looking forward to this process and going with you along the way with the budgeting aspect.
Thank you.
Also doing a great job there, Mr. Chair. Council McLeir, Council Twill, Council Twill first, then Council McLeir.
Thank you for your presentation, Emily. One of the challenges, you know, you talk about ninety new hires, is that we have people in our community that are, that are looking to work for the city's corporation. And they fill out an application, they don't get a response. And they're frustrated by not getting a response to their application. Then when they're told to contact the Human Resource Department, they contact the Human Resource Department and they're still, there seems to be a lot of confusion because say they want to work in Public Works and they want to work in Parks and Recreation or in the Tourism Department. I don't know if it's a communication gap or miscommunication or, or the way it's structured. I'm not really sure. Maybe you could help me with that. But if someone wants to work for the Public Works Department, they fill out an application, they don't receive confirmation back. Then if they take it upon themselves to go to the Public Works Department, Public Works says, no, you have to go to the Human Resource Department, talk to them there, and then not really sure what the process is, you know, whether there's interviews, whether they get an interview, they don't get an interview. But there's got to be a much better way for someone that fills out an application, B, to get a response, C, what's the next step forward, whether it's talking with the manager of that particular department, or talking with you, or someone in your department. But I, I found it very frustrating, and I know a lot of the applicants are very frustrated trying to get access as to what the proper procedure is to, to getting work because A, they don't get any, 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 any feedback that their application, B, A has been received. And then when they do make the inquiry, they're still at a loss and, and they're confused whether they go to that particular department, go to your department. And again, the response is extremely frustrating. Like, I can't tell you how frustrating it was for people that, that are looking to work for the city's corporation. It's just been, I don't know. It's probably one of the most frustrating things that, that they've experienced over the past year. So what can we do to enhance and improve that?
Emily?
Yep. Thank you for your comments, Council Twill. We receive hundreds of resumes, applications monthly. Recruitment is a very competitive process. We have our staffing bylaw that we have to follow up. And the process for applications, so we, we post all of our positions, we do callouts for our winter operations, our seasonal staff, and we, we compile all of those applications and screen them. Some of the applications we receive may be incomplete. We do follow up with those folks if the manager is interested in bringing those individuals in. But again, we receive hundreds of applications. Maybe there is a way that we can have an automated response, go back to those, those folks. But when it comes to responding individually to all of the folks who apply, that I'm open to suggestions or feedback.
Council McLeir, then Council Twill, we'll come back to you.
Emily, thank you for your report. Just on your top five departmental priorities, pleased to see your third bullet there, Performance Management System. Can you just share, share with us or with me, I'd like to understand maybe what, you know, how it currently works and maybe where your, what your vision is where you want to get it, please? Thank you.
Sure. So, thank you, Council McLeir. Currently, it is a paper-based process. All of our permanent and contract and seasonal folks have a performance review. It has turned into more of a checkbox to move, to allow you to get to your next increment. And once folks reach that top increment step, we're seeing that the performance appraisals are not being completed. It's disappointing. This is a valuable tool. It provides feedback to staff in areas in which they're doing great and areas maybe they could improve upon. It also shows staff that we value them and want to invest in them. So we are looking to move to more of an automated web-based software where employees could put in their feedback and then managers or supervisors could meet with them and it could be a more collaborative process. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just want to follow up on Council Twill's question or, and just if I may add, you know, looking at the employment section of the city of Charlottetown's website, there's not a lot of information there regarding how to navigate the path of, of applying for a position within the city and what the expectations might be and what certain avenues they may take. So what I would suggest possibly is looking at adding some content related to the process so that people know how to follow that through and, and proper contact information. It may alleviate and help in that area somewhat. I mean, if you're just filling out an application, it's received, they, they don't qualify and they don't get a, an interview per se, you know, it just kind of ends there, I think is what Council Twill is suggesting in some cases, and then they're reaching out. So just maybe some information to allow to navigate. I know in other areas and other jurisdictions, you know, if you want to know how to get a driver's license, you've got to go and follow all these steps to get there. Same thing with the, with the, if you're looking at the position, you know, you, you had to have a resume, you have to have a cover letter, you do this, you do this, you'll be contacted, or you won't be contacted if you're not the successful applicant. So you can be more transparent about that with some information. So just a suggestion to add to Council Twill's question, thank you.
Council Ramsey.
Thank you, worship. Thank you, Emily, for that. And the only few things that I discussed with you or I would like to see with the corporation, we have some great people here. And if there's a higher-up job being offered, like a manager or assistant manager, something like that, I really, my, this is just my personal opinion, I really think we should be looking at in-house first because, and I know we have to follow the rules and put it out there, and if, if they're not qualified for the job, I understand that too, then we go outside. But it sort of builds up the morale and everything, what people, if they know they have a chance to move up the ladder a little bit, maybe, or things along that line, that's, that's the simple way of doing it. Like, sort of gives them the end goal. So that's, that's the only comment I have of that. Thank you.
Emily?
Yep. Thank you, Council Ramsey. We did chat about this the other day. And I think that the Training and Development Officer will be beneficial for the corporation because it will allow those folks to grow in areas in which they are interested in moving forward with the corporation.
Council Twill, you want to follow up there?
Yeah. Thank you, Council Twill. I think that, you know, I think that's a step in the right direction. Again, I just want to reiterate how difficult and frustrating it is for applicants that truly want to work and, and they put their name in and then they come back to me, I haven't heard anything. Then I said, well, approach, say, you know, the Human Resource Department, and there's still, there still doesn't seem to be a path forward as to how to seek employment of, of, you know, the area they'd like to work in. So, Council Twill, I think that is a step in the right direction. Hopefully, you can take this back to your committee, see what we can do to, you know, first of all, there has to be some type of acknowledgement of the application. You've got to keep in mind, a lot of these people that are looking for work, you know, these are difficult times in our, in our society. They need help and they'd like to be able to help navigate them to inquire employment. I mean, you know, when you look at the upper, upper-level jobs here in the city of Charlottetown, there's an advantage for some of our employees. I mean, there's headhunters, there's, there's, there's people that are, that are helping them looking for work throughout different municipalities all over Canada. A lot of these peoples don't have that, you know, don't have that, you know, that type of resources and the type of, you know, people out there looking for them. And so a lot of our, I find a lot of our citizens are truly at a loss. And then, you know, if you look at the staffing bylaw, well, elected officials are not allowed to be involved. You know, you're not allowed to be involved. You can't, I don't know, I mean, can you write a letter? You can't even write a letter of recommendation. Or you can, I don't know, that seems to be a gray area as well. But, but I got to tell you, over the last year, has been extremely, extremely frustrating. And a lot of our residents that are looking for work are, I mean, again, not to belabor the point, but Council Twill, I want to thank you for acknowledging that. And please, if you could take that back to your commi- back to your committee, there's got to be a better way to communicating with people in our community. There's got to be.
Emily, I know people who call me, I ask them, if you don't get a response, call me back. And sometimes when you get, send out an automatic response that we've received it, that gives a false sense of security. So there are people that will follow up, and I understand what's being said here. But overall, I think the department is doing a great job, Mr. Chair, and I think you would agree. And we always have to keep in mind that councils do get concerns from their constituents and we have to respond.
Yeah.
In this form or through other ways. I'm just going to let Council Twill go ahead.
Sorry, just to wrap up, I, I do fully agree with the, with the work that the HR department is doing. I think there is some great feedback here. There's, there's certainly other jurisdictions that are, are doing things in this area that we can certainly tap onto and, and implement here as well. So those are all great suggestions, and I made lots of notes here, and I'll take that back to the committee meeting. And I'm sure we could, over a period of time, come up with a bit of a roadmap as to what that would look like and how we'd address that. Thank you.
Okay. You're live, you're live again there, Council Twill.
Thank you. One of the things that we used to do here on council, this is many years ago, remember, we had a, we had a, we had a fantastic HR manager. Her name was Eleanor.
Eleanor Glant.
Yeah. And she had a, she had a fantastic approach to working with the workforce here in the city. For example, council used to meet with the unions, could bring them in, could be QP 501, 830, maybe it was police, whatever the case may be. And we would have an open dialogue as to what the challenges were that their respective, you know, union had. And I found that when we had that type of a dialogue, we accomplished so much and so much was accomplished in a much shorter period of time as opposed to, you know, I know we, we, we have our lawyers that are directly involved with the, with the discussions and negotiations, mediation, arbitration, all those things and all those different steps. But just having an open discussion with, with the different unions here in the chamber, to my mind, fostered a much better understanding, a much better appreciation, and we accomplished so much more in such a shorter period of time. And I'd like to, I'd like to explore that as opposed to, you know, these delays and not pointing the finger at anyone or, or being critical, but the timeframe seems to be much too long. And, and maybe that's something you could take under your advisement. Again, Eleanor, that the, that was here as the Human Resource Manager, I can tell you that it went over extremely well. Her approach was, was fantastic. And maybe we could explore, explore that methodology.
Yeah. Well, I can say this much, that Emily MacLeod and the, the chair would agree and the committee also, doing a fantastic job up there. And when my brother was first elected in 1982, each councillor was allowed four hires. Those days are gone. So I think it's more equitable. Oh, no, they were. Oh, no, each were allowed four, four hires. And that was the old, that was, that was, yeah, those, I never got hired because it was nepotism. Anyways, did you want to follow up there? You're done there? Okay. Yep, yep. Okay, is that it, Emily? Thank you very much. Say hi to Phoebe.
Come here.
Yes, CAO?
Thank you, worship. So I just want to clarify some expectations. The reason why there hasn't been that involvement with the union is because the Municipal Government Act came in and that responsibility is under the purview of the chief administrative officers. So that's why that, that meeting isn't happening anymore with the HR department. So I just want to clarify that. The, the other piece is I just want to, rather than confirm a budget priority, I think what I heard was an action item, which was improving the communications and the mapping on the job application website for applicants to make that more clear and transparent. So I just want to check in with that before we move on to the next item, if I could.
Did you want to say something, Council Twill, Chair of the committee?
I, I think that is correct. You know, we certainly come out of this was some, to look at some of our practices around the application process, recruitment, et cetera, et cetera. However, I think there are some priorities that Emily would like to move forward in this, so we haven't really addressed that in the sense of hearing, you know, we look at a Training and Development Officer Wellness Program, Performance Management System. You know, I think if that is in order of importance, then we should be addressing, you know, these areas. And I did hear the Training and Development Officer position might be something that helps in these areas that we're, we're talking about here with this. So is that fair?
Yeah.
Emily, is that good for you?
So, CAO, who's our next presenter, the chief police? I guess that's why you're sitting there. Okay, chief, how you doing, chief?
I'm doing well, your worship, and good morning, council. It's always a privilege to speak to you directly in such important issues such as budget. I'll jump right into my presentation here, Tracy, if it's, oh, there we go. Who we are as a police service, the Charlottetown Police Service is, you know, I've, I've been with the police service for twenty-eight years now and certainly progressed a lot over that time. We've grown today to be sixty-nine sworn officers. Five of those officers are funded from the province through different initiatives, twenty-two civilians, and we have one, we have twenty-one seasonal employees because we also manage the crossing guards through our, through our, our bylaw officer. We investigate and look after a number of things. So we, in our operations sections, we have our patrol section, which is made up of four battunes of ten officers. On each of those battunes, there's two priority tactical response officers who are trained monthly to respond to more elevated levels of threat that might happen within our city. And unfortunately, that is a reality that we have to face today. We also have a community policing section with such things as wellness officers and certainly with issues around the Community Outreach Center, officers that are assigned to patrol that area of influence and deal with people that are affected by either addiction or mental health or homelessness and, and, you know, certainly the impact that those issues have in neighborhoods requires policing. And so having officers dedicated to address that is extremely important. We also do events and community, such a, community events, but also events like concerts, VIP visits through our community policing section. Our major crime section can investigate a number of things, but they're very busy. And unfortunately, one of the big issues facing them right now is sex-related crimes. We move over to our street crime unit, who is responsible for property-related crime, but also street-level drugs, which are an issue both in our city and province and across Canada. Our court and support services, forensic, forensic ident and digital forensic support along with property and evidence management. And certainly, we have our telecoms section, our communication, who like to say they tell this, they tell policemen where to go, which is true in a lot of ways. And then we have other, our parking ticket and support systems that look after our, both our parking and provincial tickets, ticket streams. We operate from a community policing model. You know, CPS is committed to maintaining itself in a healthy, vibrant community. Our spirit and work are guided by our commitment to be the guardians of the birthplace of Confederation. We recognize that our role as protectors is rooted in compassion, empathy, and understanding, and mutual respect. We partner and engage with community members and organizations to collaborate, identify, and problem-solve local challenges and increase, increase safety for residents, visitors, and our our officers. What we do in our core function is emergency response, quality investigations and response to non-emergency calls, traffic safety, crime prevention and community building. Our calls for service has certainly increased over the years, too. And, uh, in the, uh, here's a graph of this the last two years, but I can tell you, I was looking at some numbers this morning, and, uh, over the last three years, we're projected to, since, uh, projected to have increased our call for service, uh, by 7,500 calls in the last three years, which is very significant, uh, given that, uh, um, that is, um, you know, we, when I started here, uh, um, we would answer probably about 8,000 calls for service, uh, a year. 2012, uh, we were around 12,000. Today, 2023, we will be around 23,000 calls for service. That's before anything proactive ever gets done, before a community talk, anything. That's just people calling the police, looking for service. The needs and expectations of our police service have also grown by the day. Homelessness, mental health, addictions are just a few of the complex issues that face our community. Understanding our roles as a police service and the connections between these complex issues is a key to better supporting our community. And we work very hard to try to find that balance. What we do in our operational side is, is certainly drug trafficking. I put a slide up there with a picture to show you the complexity of some of these. So that toaster box there, and you'll see a barcode, which I've kind of blown up the image of, and, and, uh, most would look at that and say, that's from a manufacturer inventory barcode, but that's actually from an organized crime group. Uh, and if you read, can read the fine print there, it says PEI Borough BT 0046, the 46 shipment to that individual, uh, this year. Um, drug trafficking is sophisticated, use, those types of things are used for inventory control. Um, what you see on the, on the desk beside it is, um, is some of the spoils from that toaster box, and we see that all the time. Tech crime is also, uh, a big, uh, a big challenge to keep pace with. Everything that we do now involves an element of technology, whether it's, uh, threat, um, drug trafficking, financial-related crime. Everything, uh, that we do requires, uh, a technical mindset, a technical support, and, uh, it is extremely, uh, challenging to, um, to keep up, uh, keep pace with this, as the criminals have this technology also and are using it, uh, without any rules or, or regard for safety. Human trafficking, uh, is also a reality in our, in our jurisdiction. Certainly, uh, with disposable income, uh, within our jurisdiction, with tourism, also comes realities of such things as prostitution. Uh, that is a reality that, that happens every day and increases during our summer months and requires a response. Child exploitation is also an unfortunate reality and, uh, and, and happening far too often. And in fact, the CPS has, uh, gained a lot of technical, um, capacity in, in dealing with this, but we have room, we have, uh, room to advance and we have to do much more to protect the vulnerable. Financial crime, Charlottetown is a center of commerce on the island, but as we know, being the center of commerce is no longer the, being the center of financing with technology, things doing the internet, it is extremely challenged to track down people that are using, uh, technology to manipulate and, uh, take advantage of people. We've seen senior fraud and other, uh, things, uh, you know, uh, really increase over the last number of years. And, uh, holding those accountable, uh, that are taking advantage of seniors and people who are vulnerable, um, and sometimes destroying their lives, um, is also something that's, uh, uh, very, uh, top of our mind, and, uh, we need to do more to, uh, to support, uh, those people that are being, um, victimized. Homicides, we're very fortunate, um, in our city that we, we only experience a homicide every, every, every three years. But when a homicide happens here in our jurisdiction, it captivates our community and it becomes a center of attention, and it demands a response probably like no other place. And when a, when a homicide happens, like it did this summer, all hands are on deck to solve that. Not for, not only for the victim, but mo- and their families, uh, to find justice and closure, but to restore confidence, uh, in our community that their people are safe in our community. And, uh, and, uh, so when these things happen, they take an incredible amount of resources, uh, to, um, to manage and bring to sexual conclusions. Sexual assaults, I also provided an image of a, an article, I'll bring up in our, I think it's, get to the right slide here.
Hey, Brad.
I'm going, oh, go in the wrong direction, using the wrong button.
I'll take any questions.
So I gotta go way back here. Sorry, um, but on your screen there, you'll see an article, uh, in the Guardian, where, uh, where victims groups, uh, you know, certainly recognize and bring into attention that sexual assaults have, in PEI, have more than doubled in the last five years. Um, I know that to be a reality also, and, uh, so providing, uh, the capacity and ability, uh, to respond to that, increasing, uh, increasing numbers has also been very challenging on our, on our, um, our police service. And, uh, and of course, these are very serious and impactful crimes to people's lives, so they need our attention. And again, uh, child and senior abuse, um, are very, uh, very important to certainly have the capacity to deal with. And certainly robbery, um, we have an extremely high record of solving robberies here in PEI. Um, but, uh, when they're happened, they, they do, uh, very much, uh, gain a lot of attention, are very personal, because robbery is, is theft, uh, with violence or the threat of violence. So it's just not someone stealing something from someone, there's, uh, an element of, 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 uh, of fear or violence involved in it. And, uh, so that's very concerning. What we do, uh, through our intelligence sector, section, so, uh, we, we couldn't do anything, uh, that we do without, uh, having a pool of human sources, um, to give us information. And it takes, uh, resources to manage those human sources and, uh, and harness that intelligence to make sure that we have the pulse of our community, not just every day, every hour of each day. And a lot of work goes in to managing those human sources and, and, and harnessing that information to make sure it gets into the, 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 into the ears and files of investigators that need to solve crimes. We also do a number of open source searches with the internet and, uh, technology as it is, there's a tremendous amount of information that could be happening, uh, in our community. Whether it's about a protest or something that's happening, our investigators and our crime analysts are using open sources to gather intelligence to also keep that pulse. And then through judicial, you know, through crime analytics, we have a very, uh, proficient crime analyst within our, our police service who, uh, who pieces it all together and provides perspective on a daily basis about what's happening and who's connected to who and who may be responsible for certain crimes based on previous history and where their, where their criminality is operating currently. And, uh, so he is part of a, a, a team that meets daily to, to bring all that in perspective. And then certainly all the information that we obtain through judicial data analytics. Every crime we involve, uh, and solve, Arishe's search warrant for, um, has a piece of technology with it, whether it's a phone, laptop and a vehicle. And extracting those, that data from those devices is key, um, to solving crimes, understanding how they happen, getting the truth behind them and, uh, holding people accountable for them. And, uh, but that is complicated and not cheap, uh, as the technology evolves every Public order. I'll get back here. We're a city and province who invite people, uh, en masse here to celebrate, uh, enjoy our city, and rightly so, it's so beautiful. Um, and our, our team and our, and our corporate and events management have done a tremendous job in, in making that a reality. Um, but with that experience comes the expectation that we're gonna keep them safe. And, uh, when we have, uh, have huge events, uh, we must be able to police them, uh, appropriately. And, uh, because, uh, as we live in an uncertain world, uh, things can happen quickly, and one incident, one of our major events can undermine tourism and the confidence in our city, uh, for, for a long time. So it's important we have the resources and the manpower to police these properly. We've also, uh, seen an extreme increase in protests in our city and province, and Charlottetown being the capital city is the center of all of that. And it's not just things that are being protested locally, it's not just local events, it's things that are happening across the world that are bringing protests to our city. And, uh, all of that requires intelligence gathering, it requires boots on the ground, it requires management, and it requires the visible evidence of policing that, um, people are gonna be kept safe when they're exercising their rightful, uh, um, duty to protest and, uh, and march. And so, um, as we play our part in, in, uh, doing that, certainly, again, it's one of the things that we need to deliver on. Incident manage, management, um, I think I had a slide out of order, um, but I'd like to, to bring it forward here. When I talked about, um, incident management, um, so, incident management has become, uh, especially critical, incident management has become, uh, very important in today's, uh, emergency and public safety, uh, process. Um, and, uh, most notably, the, the expectation of that was noted in recommendation 50 of the Massacalities Commission out of Nova Scotia, who, uh, recommended that, uh, the commission recommends that all Canadian police agencies should implement five principles of effective critical incident response. Prepare for critical incidents before they happen. Recognize that every critical incident is unique and therefore that training, preparation, must equip first responders, communications 911 operators, supervisors and commanders to make decisions and act in conditions of considerable uncertainty. Ensure that planning, policies and training include other agencies that will be involved, uh, in a critical incident response, fostering a culture of interoperability among emergency responders. And that just doesn't include, uh, police and fire, that includes our city's services to understand their role in, uh, in emerging events as they happen. Recognizing that affected community members are the true first responders to a critical incident and evaluate every critical incident response after it takes place. And I can tell you, we have some work to do in that area, and we will need to invest in that area. VIP visits, PEI is attractive place to host conferences and, and come, and we've seen an increase in VIP visits over the, uh, over the last number of years. And, uh, as the VIPs come visit, there's a, there is, uh, an expectation that local police will provide liaison and support to make sure that, uh, VIPs in our area are kept safe, as our officers hold local knowledge, understanding of, uh, the local culture and, um, and provide very, very important, uh, information and guidance to, uh, the close security teams that come with the VIPs. Our achievements, um, as a, as a police service, and I really think as a city, um, you know, cannot be put just in one or two pages. We, we do a tremendous job in our city, although our city has, has become, uh, has grown and, uh, become, you know, uh, very involved in con, uh, you know, very complex issues. Uh, we are still a very safe city and one of the safest cities in Canada and, you know, uh, have, on this slide and an arrow pointing to PEI, you know, we have the second, um, lowest crime severity index in the country and, uh, per population, and that's something to be proud of. We've also, in our 2023 community survey results, ninety, 93% of our residents feel safe in our Charlottetown, 63%, um, somewhat safe, uh, or very safe, 63% very safe and 30% somewhat safe. And those numbers, uh, um, are important, and, and not every city enjoys that level of confidence and safety. So, you know, uh, as chief, you know, certainly, we're proud of those numbers, but we also know and recognize we police a very, uh, great community of people and that play a part in, in, in those numbers also. Our challenges, um, staffing, we, we are truly at, at a critical point in our staffing levels for policing. Um, our city has grown, um, so quickly, the issues and calls for service have escalated so quickly, the complexity of the calls for service have escalated and become more challenging. Uh, we, we, there's a, a need to invest in policing and, uh, and, uh, it's a very challenging, um, aspect of our, of one of our needs currently, because, um, it's a very competitive staffing market out there in policing, and, well, we need to be aggressive in our, in our recruiting. Homelessness, mental health, drug trafficking, training and development through, through the organization. Um, I joined the police service in 1995 when our city amalgamated. Um, I was amongst 18 officers at the time that recruited and were part of the city expansion. Those 18 officers and some of them are all coming up to their, their near-retirement dates. And a lot of those hold senior positions within our police services, and there, there is requirement to build capacity, uh, to recognize that there will be capacity gaps as, as, uh, as these, uh, uh, people, uh, transition to a well-deserved retirement. So we do, we have work to do there also. Staff wellness, I don't think it's ever been as challenging on the front line of policing and for our officers as it currently is. It truly is something, um, that is recognized from, uh, across the country from police leaders. I sit on the National Board of, of Chiefs, and a lot of our time is, is, uh, is used talking about how we can support our officers during this challenging time. The constant exposure to mental health issues and, uh, negative police, uh, imaging, um, has, has eroded a lot of things, uh, in the well-being of our officers, and, uh, we must do more to support them in this very challenging time. Police population, uh, ratio, um, again, in the slide, you can see our, on the right side, our population growth in the last, uh, few years has just exploded, and that's been great for the city and province in a lot of areas, but it comes with challenges, uh, when it comes to delivering services. Um, and also our police population ratio, police in PEI have always been low in the chart and historically always been the lowest, um, police population ratio in, in, in Canada, but that ratio with, with the population increase has even become more challenging. We also police far more than our sleeping population here in Charlottetown. Um, I put a couple of slides here of, uh, just an example of, of, uh, what that looks like. So we recognize that 50% of everyone we give a ticket to or a warning to are not residents of our city, they're from other parts of the island. And, um, so we are a hub city, and, uh, with that comes, um, a lot of people that migrate into it on a daily basis. So our sleeping population is quite different from our daily population, that explodes. Um, and we see it across our calls. The next slide shows our, um, our people that are involved in, uh, accidents. Less than 50% of the people involved in our accidents do not live in our city. of the people involved in our accidents do not live in our city. Just over fifty-five percent of the people we see for impaired driving do not live in our city. That translates capacity building. We need officers. We need media and communication liaison officers. across our calls for service. And it's just a glimpse into the fact that we need, you We need support staff to support those officers. We need to invest in road safety. When we know, we need to recognize that when we're in conversation with our partners, especially look at our citizen survey, although most people are happy with the lever of service to deliver, where people want improvement is in road and traffic safety issues. We at the province, that the city of Charlottetown, especially, you know, in policing services must recognize that and provide more there. and other frontline services, have a huge role to play in keeping our islanders safe Critical incident and planning and response. There's much work to do there. Bylaw enforcement and enhancement. I don't have to tell the city council how important and are providing service far beyond what our tax base is. our bylaws are to our residents and the need to be able to have mechanisms to enforce Further to that, I think we average about 1.6 million visitors a year, with 100 cruise them properly and have the manpower to deal with the level and volume of complaints. ships projected to come next year. A lot of that tourism coming in the summer months. Keeping pace with technology. We must continue to invest in technology, and as we cannot And we no longer have the ability to supplement through summer staffing to deal with that support our teams and keep our community safe without investing in technology. population increase. Facility updates, especially in our dispatch center and our records manager. We moved into our building in the fall of 1999, and it is aging. We're running out of space. We need some modernization, especially in our communications center. And we would be talking to our public works partners about updating that to modern standards. We do have opportunities in our future, too. Charlottetown is a center of capacity when it comes to technology in policing in the region. And that has positioned us to provide, you know, certainly a lead when it comes to things like photo enforcement. Our government is currently nearly finding, finishing the regulations for things like photo enforcement. And we want to be at the lead of that conversation. We have the infrastructure. We have the know-how. And we've built the building blocks to be at the forefront of that. And we certainly see opportunities both in road safety initiatives and ways to keep our community safe. Opportunity in eWatch and real-time crime and data center. We're very fortunate in what we've built here in our city. We get requests from all over the region about how we're doing our eWatch program and how we're using it for situational awareness across our city to manage major events and such things as the Island Marathon and things that are unfolding across our city. Our partners in Summerside and Kensington have seen what we've done, and we, through different federal initiatives, have brought them into partnering in some of our technology. We're in conversations with Stratford and other jurisdictions to help them enjoy our same experience. But as we build that, there's opportunities to do more and support our partners in situational awareness across the island. And do we have volume, Tracy, on this?
with the Charlottetown Police for 15 years now as a dispatcher. And technology has really come a long way since I started here. But probably the single most effective tool that we use in dispatching now would be...
Who?
Hi, my name is Kelly Gale, and I'm a dis-
Good there?
My name is Kelly Gale, and I'm a dispatcher with the Charlottetown Police. I've been working with the Charlottetown Police for 15 years now as a dispatcher. And technology has really come a long way since I started here. But probably the single most effective tool that we use in dispatching now would be our eWatch camera system and our LPR system. So currently with eWatch, we have over 100 cameras positioned in key areas around the city. And we have real-time access to the cameras. We have the ability to play back footage. And it's been extremely useful in identifying suspects for officers. Us as dispatchers have become way more familiar with what people look like. A lot of the people we deal with on a day-to-day basis, we can identify them on eWatch. If an officer's on his way down for, say, a suspicious person, we can bring up the camera in the area and say, hey, it's this person. This is who you're looking for. We can give detailed descriptions on clothing, vehicles, what people are wearing, what direction they're going in. We can follow them in real time on our cameras because the cameras are so well-positioned around the city. And with our LPR camera system, we're able to run partial plates. So if someone calls in and says, I was just in a hit-and-run, I got half the plate. This is what it is. This is a description of the vehicle. I can plug that partial plate into the LPR. It brings me up photos of vehicles with that part of the plate. And I can run through and say, this matches the description they gave. It could be this vehicle. It was in that area at that time, and provide that information to the officers responding. We can use it to track the whereabouts of missing or suicidal people that may be traveling in a vehicle, stolen vehicles, suspended drivers, prohibited drivers, frequent impaired drivers. We have the ability to add those plates into our LPR system, and then we get a notification if they pass through any of those particular cameras. Again, same as eWatch, we can provide up-to-date locations of vehicles that an officer may be looking for. It can populate through the LPR if we've entered it, or we can manually run a vehicle that we're looking for and say, hey, it just went out of the city in this direction. So it's, both systems are extremely useful. I honestly don't know how we went without them for so long, but they're amazing. And we use them multiple times a day, every day.
That was a little hard to hear, but that was our dispatcher, Kelly Gale, giving a video testimonial about the benefits of the technology we invest in eWatch and our LPR systems and how effective it is as a tool. And we need to continue investing on that because it makes us a leader in this capacity. And we can better support not just our community, our officers, but our other community partners across the island as we grow here. That, your worship, I believe, is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you very much, Chief Brad McConnell. I have Counselor Beck and then Counselor Matar.
Thank you for that, chief. I do want to, I guess publicly, thank you, chief, for, I had the pleasure last Monday of going in and getting, after several months of cancellations and rescheduling, we finally were able to get the tour of the city police station. And as someone who worked as a summer police officer back with the city of Charlottetown during my university years in the early 1980s, my frame of reference was slapped in the face in a hurry when I walked in and did a tour of the city of all my, I tell you, it was very impressive. And the amount of, when I go back to your org chart at the start, you don't have to bring it up, but one of the things that struck me was the level of integration and cohesion and workability, I guess, that goes on with the department. And everyone is very much linked to one another. And technology does play a huge role in terms of what is done. And it's not only the officers. It's the Kelly Gales of the world. It's your tech guy sits down in that converted space down in the bottom part of the building who, you know, does the logistics of all this stuff. But, you know, when you think about maximizing our resources and using technology for best-serving our citizens, it was very impressive. And if any of you have not had the opportunity to go down, fellow counselors, I would certainly encourage you to do so because it gives great insights. And this whole presentation here this morning gives great insights, too, but from all our departments. But it certainly, you know, I think the chief is a little modest and is understating, you know, how there's communities right across eastern Canada are reaching out to the city of Charlottetown to figure out how we're doing it. And, you know, I know there's some identified areas where we could even be better. So the chief isn't even satisfied. He's not saying, you know, we've got it all figured out. He's saying, we're doing, I'm looking at a sign, great things are happening here in Charlottetown, and great things are happening with the Charlottetown Police Services. So, thank you. It was, we're lucky to have you guide that. And thanks for your presentation today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Beck. Counselor Matar.
Yes. Thank you, Chief McConnell, for the presentation. Certainly gives me a better perspective of the operations and challenges faced by CPS. I just wanted to make a comment through the presentation. One thing that it wasn't explicit to me was around public relations and the work that's being done in that area. As you know, the city is faced with many challenges on many fronts. And, you know, I think as our citizens are, you know, expecting and understanding of what is happening and, you know, what plans are in place to mitigate those challenges that we're facing, what type of model or plan do you have around public relations? I know the website, you know, puts information on there, but, you know, community engagement, providing information more readily to residents on many fronts. You know, we're faced with things that are occurring in our city center. So just interested in understanding a little bit more on the public relations side of things and what the plan might look for in the future on that.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor. And that's a great question, and certainly something we identified. And in our staffing priorities, media and community relations officer to harness that and lead that and support our officers and telling our story and the great work that's being done. And managing critical communications when we need it is something we've recognized for a few years now that we need to build capacity on. Policing is, you know, is complex and involves a lot of sensitive information. And to be really in the involvement of that on a daily basis, we need a communications resource that's embedded into that org chart with us, that's in our morning briefings, that can find the stories to tell, that identifies the things to follow up with the media, identify opportunities in the community for community engagement with our officers. And mostly just to tell our stories because we're doing a lot of great things. And even though that we're challenged, there's still a lot of great work that's being done. You know, we still, you know, are very unique in providing our Healthy Me program to our grade-six classes across our city. It's an award-winning program that was developed here by our officers and the school board. And it's a great community engagement. And there's interactions that happen every day, and heroes every day. Officers regularly save lives, do things that make life-changing things for people and guidance. And there's a lot to tell there. But telling that story, harnessing that information, getting it out there, supporting our community so they understand what we're doing and how we're doing it, is really important. And there is work to do there. And the start would be filling that media and communications liaison officer.
Counselor McLeary.
Thank you, chief, for a great report. I know it's certainly a challenge for more police officers. You know, I understand that. We're coming near a budget year. And I know that, you know, going forward, it's certainly something that we're going to have to dig deep within our own finances. But I think it's ultimately going forward as well as something that we're going to have to work in collaboration with the province with in terms of, you know, funding what our needs are going to be going forward. Because I know in some of the graphs you shared there, and I think it's a conversation in heaven with you, talking about all the calls, we looked at the, you know, impaired driving and accident claims. And did I understand you to also say that in your stats, approximately 50% of all calls, police calls in the province, are handled by CPS?
I didn't have the time to put all that because there's so many calls. But, you know, we see it quite consistently across the different types of calls. And I would expect it is in that vicinity for sure. You know, certainly, we have a lot of repeat offenders that live in the city, so mindful to there. But, you know, certainly, the individual, unique individuals that we deal with, that ratio would probably be very close.
And if I could, just quickly, on the cameras, there's 100 cameras, eWatch, approximately?
There's over 100 cameras. I don't have the exact number with me. We have different types of technology with our eWatch and our license plate recognition and...
And is that close to where you'd like to be with it? Is there a number above that that is ideal?
Well, I think it's certainly something, you've heard the value, it's something that we need to, there's gaps in certainly the western side of our city and northern side of our city that we'd like to get some continuity of. But it's also, you know, investing and maintaining what we have, too, right? And continue to keep that valuable resource moving forward. And we do it with community support, too. That's largely done by community support. But the city is also required to invest.
No speeding. Photo radar? Just any comment on that? Thank you.
Yeah, photo enforcement is something that is, you know, very much we're looking forward to. It has certainly a lot of implications. I think there's-
You know, certainly we have a lot of repeat offenders that live in the city, so mindful to there. But I'm—you know, certainly the individual, unique individuals that we deal with, that ratio would probably be very close.
And if I could just quickly, on the cameras, there's 100 cameras, e-watch, approximately?
There's over 100 cameras. I don't have the exact number with me. We have different types of technology with our e-watch and our license plate recognition.
And is that close to where you'd like to be with it? Is there a number above that that would—is ideal?
Well, I think it's certainly something—you've heard the value, it's something that we need—to there's gaps and certainly the western side of our city and northern side of our city that we'd like to get some continuity of. But it's also, you know, investing and maintaining what we have too, right? And continue to keep that valuable resource moving forward. And we do it with community support too. That's largely done by community support. But the city is also required to invest.
No speeding, photo radar, just any comment on that? Thank you.
Yeah, photo enforcement is something that is, you know, very much we're looking forward to. It has certainly a lot of implications. I think there's—I think our infrastructure and what we built here in Charlestown through our e-watch and our LPR system has put us at the very best possible place for a starting point to get into that type of space and technology. And I think we could lead that initiative, not just for ourselves, but a lot of communities across the island if they were willing to partner.
Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, your worship. Chief, as Chair, thank you very much for your presentation. And as I looked around the room, I think everybody on council so far had a tour of the police station and the operations and all that, especially the four new councilors. I'd like to thank Counselor Beck for bringing it up. And we all know, as we stated earlier and we hear in council every month, how the resources got to be very important to this department because our city is growing and there's more issues out there than all of us in this room seen in the last five years, 10 years. The city has changed and we're certainly looking for everyone's main support on everything that the chief recommends. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, just looking at your challenges and correlating them with the priorities—homelessness, provincial issue, working with municipalities in the federal government, mental health, again provincial, working with municipalities. I think one that shouts out to me is staffing and you also list that as a priority. And if you were looking at this year for officers, to increase your number of officers, what would you be looking at number-wise? I know we've said six as a proposal. What would you be looking at for 24, 25?
Well, you know, your worship, we should be looking at another 10 officers. And we are—I've got ourselves, you know, in a—you know, place of where we're kind of a perfect storm in the level of growth and call volume and evolution in the police services and the policing space. Historically, this would not have been such an acute issue. But the way policing has evolved as a profession and the demand for policing across the country has prevented us from attracting people for summertime employment and short-term employment. And those positions just are not available to take advantage. So, in years past, we were able to use—take advantage of hiring people just for short contract work over the summer. We no longer enjoy that experience. So, we have to staff and hire full-time for year-round levels to be consistent throughout the year because if we do not, we will be short during our busiest months. And I just—and staffing again and how that appropriate levels of staffing play in to our existing staffing. And, you know, if we do not support our teams and lead to officer burnout and disillusionment, if we're not good on the inside, we will not be good on the outside.
Yeah, it's like your priority number one is staffing, but that interlocks with road safety, critical incident planning and response by law enforcement and enhancement, technology facility—well, facility updates is a capital project, so that would fall under capital requirement. Yeah, no, I ask that because I think that's what we'll have to grapple with. And I think what the CEO has said often is that it's not just police officers, it's equipment, whether it's personal equipment, safety equipment, and also vehicles to provide transportation. Just before I go, and I know that the Chair wants to respond, LPR cam—what's an LPR? I couldn't find that.
License plate recognition.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ramsey.
Yeah, Chief, just to clarify, when your worship said you were looking at six, but then you said 10, that's not 16 in total. Like, that adds up to 10, correct? I mean, we love to have 16. I mean, don't get me wrong, but—
I don't want to confuse the issue. I think the worship we had through our committee had put a proposal through to hire six or find six in this year's budget if we're projecting next year and continued growth. It adds on again next year.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you.
Did you have something to say, CEO? Is it clear to you?
Yes, thank you, worship. Those positions—I was also just going to clarify the other action item and budget priority I captured just to make sure we're on the—if we're there unless there's other—
It's 10 total for—
And what we have today before negotiations and everything else that we go through is 10, and that's later this afternoon that I'll capture that in the presentation.
Yep, okay. Counselor Twill.
Thank you for your presentation, Chief. You know, you've outlined a number of challenges here. Each one of them requires a lot of attention and a lot of work. We talk about the increase in police officers. I think back to 1995, I was here as well. I don't know, maybe we should have at that time added more police officers, but I guess you can't go back. You can only go with the present. But I think one of the things that this city has faced is new programs that the provincial government has introduced here in the city. And I'm not really sure some of these programs that they're trying to promote and execute in our city, usually—I call it trickle-down economics. Heard that, I think George Bush Senior talked about trickle-down economics. But the fallout seems to be always at the municipal level. And, you know, whether it's 10 officers, 20 officers, 35 officers, I really think—and I'm going to be strong in this, and I'm going to continue on this mindset—I really believe that the provincial government has a responsibility to provide funding for additional police officers here in the city of Charlestown. I really do. I—you know, it's great for them to, you know, stand up and cut the ribbon, "We're doing this and we're doing that." And then, "Oh, by the way, municipal government, city of Charlestown, you have to look after that. You have to take the phone calls. You have to deal with the affected neighborhoods." One of the new phrases around here is neighborhoods of influence. I call it the repercussions that are felt by these neighborhoods and communities. I really believe that if the provincial government wants, you know, bringing in a facility like the Outreach Center or relocating it and introducing some of these other programs like—they call it harm reduction. There's other descriptions for that. And all these other things that, you know, that they boast about in the floor of the legislature, I really believe that it's—it should be a prerequisite. You want to bring in these programs, okay. How's it going to be policed? And I don't mean just on-site, Chief. I'm talking—you know, it could be five feet off-site because a lot of what I hear is, "Well, we only police what's inside our property." But five feet off the property, well, that's neighbor's responsibility or that's the municipality's responsibility. And I even question what's happening on their own properties and some of the things that are happening. But I really believe, you know, if we're looking to hire, let's say, 10 officers or 20 officers for that matter, I really believe that we need to say to the province, Province of PEI, "Those initiatives that you want to pursue impacts our municipality. And if you're going to impact our municipality, then you have to come to the table." And I don't mean just for one year. I'm talking a commitment, a financial commitment to pay for police officers or whatever resources that are required. Could be cameras, could be dispatchers, it could be whatever the case may be. They need to come to the table. Now, Counselor Dran, a couple of months ago, talked about, you know, meeting with the province. I think that should be one of the prerequisites. I really do. If they want to bring in facilities like the Outreach Center or other things that they want to do, yeah, that's fine. But you have to make a commitment, a financial commitment, because we have to be able to effectively police our neighborhoods and communities so that they're truly safe and secure and the people feel it. So, I'm not sure how we go about that, but I know that Counselor Dran brought up meeting with the Attorney General and the province. But—and I really believe too that besides yourself, elected officials should be there. And those prerequisites, those are indispensable prerequisites. It's not just downloading and putting all the emphasis and all the onus on the municipality. I don't believe it's fair. I think it's irresponsible. And that's one of the things we need to go to the table with, and we got to be hard and fast on that.
Okay, thank you. Chief, do you want to answer that or you want to?
I'll just give a quick response. Your worship, Counselor Twill, certainly I think that's what I tried to bring to light through some of these slides I shared about level policing, that bring recognition to councilors, but also others at e-watch and that we are delivering services to far more than our sleeping population and that that should be supported from a broader lens, I think.
Yeah, and Counselor Twill makes a good point. This is a governance structural issue. There's a taxing inequity between municipalities and the province. And I believe through the Chair of Finance and the Finance Committee that we're going to go after that, emphasizing the points that were made about stronger police presence with more police officers. And it's the same for fire and other critical services that we provide here in the city that we just don't have the fiscal firepower like the province and the feds. So, we need more of a tax share that the province collects. So, I think hopefully that'll be a good, a loud and clear message.
Thank you, Chief. Who's next? CEO?
Thank you, worship. So, if I can just capture what I think I've heard, which was an action item for us to negotiate with the province regarding programs they offer and calls or residences of persons who commit crimes and needed funding. And then budget priorities, I certainly heard police workforce and staffing. And the other one I just want to know about consensus on is if it should also be prioritized, police, public relations and community engagement. Yeah?
Sounds good. Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Okay, Chief. Great to see you. How you doing?
Doing very well, your worship. Good to be here.
Feeling a little better?
Can't see everybody just yet and the other things going on, but doing well. Thank you.
Okay.
Ready to begin. Thanks very much. First, I'd like to thank CEO Elnor and Betty, our Finance Manager, for putting it together in this way this year. It gives us a good opportunity to share as we're building our presentations and also obviously the outcome from this as well. And our Communications Officer, Janice, she had a lot of help with putting this together. I know from our perspective where we lack those sort of attributes in the department a little bit, but thanks, and for all the managers being here in support, especially supporting fire. I know they're all anxious to do that. First off is who we are. Charlestown Fire Department is a combination department. That's a combination of career members and volunteer members, consisting of approximately 100 members, made up of management, non-union. There's two of us in that position. We have Charlestown Professional Firefighters Association, which is the union for the firefighters and fire inspectors and fire prevention. And we have UPCE, which is our Administrative Assistant, and of course, our volunteer members. I do have an org chart a little bit later in here and you'll see the breakdown of where they all meet. Department's mission is to protect lives, limit damage to property and the environment through the development and implementation of fire protection, fire prevention, fire investigation, rescue and hazardous material response, and mitigation practices and procedures. So, a whole lot in there. It covers the wide range of reasons that members would call—people in the city would call the fire department and for those that are automatically attributed to incidents and door alarms. Department is guided by several city bylaws issued under the authority of the Provincial Municipal Governments Act and Fire Prevention Acts. And both of those, obviously the MGA recently updated or just a couple of years ago, and the Fire Prevention Act, which has had a revision recently as well, both of those, obviously, the revisions are well in advance of when the last revisions to our fire protection and emergency services bylaw, our fire prevention bylaw and our emergency services bylaw. So, all three of those, and I'll identify those later in the slide here, are in the presentation here as well, need revisions and we've been working towards that. CFD membership is motivated and encouraged by the challenges and opportunities for the growth the city's new strategic plan presents. We've discussed this across the board at the department management meetings, chiefs meetings and general meetings with the full population of the department, discussing where the city hopes to go and where the department hopes to go in the future and as we continue to try to serve our residents as best we can. There is the org chart, a little streamlined as you can envision there on the career side of the house. There's the chief, myself, our one deputy chief, who's here as well supporting. We have one administrative assistant, two fire inspector positions. One was vacant and will be recently—or will be filled on the 27th of November, which we're very fortunate to, I guess, poach one of our planning department members, which is unfortunate as they have to backfill now. But Robert Stafford taking that position, which is—we're looking forward to next week as he starts with fire. We have one fire prevention officer position. And unfortunately, our long-serving fire prevention officer, Cindy McFadyen, recently retired, so we have backfilling that position now on a temporary basis and hope to refill. Career firefighter twos, we have nine active. We do have three of the six ELS members identified there in the slide who are slotted to take firefighter two positions once we get through our collective agreement discussions, arbitration and settle on a new schedule. So, we'll actually be 12 at firefighter twos. And then over on the right side of the graph, we have obviously our District One and District Two, which are volunteer responses there and volunteer members. We have district chiefs in both districts, deputy district chiefs, a complement of captains and lieutenants in both to supervise and operate on fire ground, and a number of firefighters, 30 at District One and 32 at District Two. Those numbers fluctuate throughout the year with—due to attrition, both planned and unplanned, due to members leaving the city or retiring for different reasons. And we also have a complement of recruits. We have recently recruited 11 members who are successful through the full competition and they'll be attending our Level One firefighter training in January. So, we're very excited about that opportunity to increase our ranks in that regard as well. As you can see, it's rather streamlined organization chart and we do need to grow our staffing both in 2022, our 23, 24, 24, 25 and beyond as we continue to grow. Our budget, our operational budget mainly, regardless of our small career staffing there, is mainly dominated by wages and salaries, so it's something that we have to be considerate of and take into account as we're looking for an increase in our staffing. What we do, our members are divided between two fully equipped stations. As I mentioned, we have two districts, so Station One at 89 Kent and Station Two at 152 St. Peters Road. And we respond to all—those members respond to all manners of alarms and emergencies throughout the city. What we also do, of course, is all of our fire investigation and preventive activities. They include reviewing plans, permits, file applications, occupancy permits, inspections on-site of new and existing occupancies, questions in regards to that from Planning Department and from our residents as well. And as you can imagine, with short-term rentals coming in, with the increase in the amount of buildings in the city, et cetera, the strain that's on that aspect of our department. Our firefighters in the operational response roles begin with firefighter Level One and medical first responder training, and many continue through Level Two firefighter certification along with specialty rescue and response courses such as rope rescue, confined space rescue and hazardous material response. All of those things, while you might not see them front page all the time with our responses, do occur on a daily basis in one way, shape or form. So, our members and their training skill level is essential to be able to properly respond and safely respond to all of those types of incidents. Our fire officers partake in fire attack and emergency measures, leadership training— Our fire officers partake in fire attack and emergency measures, leadership training, uh, through the Fire School, which is, uh, out in Miltonvale and run by the PEI Firefighters Association and school members. And our department has most recently begun training under the Blue Card Incident Command System. And I'll talk a little bit about that in our priorities and challenges going forward as well. But a very new, uh, system introducing to Charlottetown, not new in the fire service, but something we're excited to undertake and our officers are very, uh, and, and senior members are very, uh, excited about bringing the program in. Our fire prevent, uh, fire prevention and inspection staff carry out public education sessions with target audiences of preschool, school through grade three, apologies. Uh, pre-COVID, we had, uh, our fire prevention officer and the, uh, and the assistants through our firefighters had every class, uh, through, uh, I think it was kindergarten through grade three at one point, uh, through the years, nailing them all and bringing them in through the fire department and also making visits through the fire school with fire prevention and, and education sessions. And we saw that, uh, later years as the kids returned through, uh, through the fire department visits at, uh, in grades that were beyond that, and they were, uh, addressing and answering the questions like they were, uh, part of our staff. So they bring that information home, which is very important in the, in a city like this to, uh, to make sure that all members are and all residents are being informed and it starts at the ground level with the kids and they really bring it home. And we're going to be playing catch-up again to get back to that, uh, that type of, uh, situation here in the city. Our inspection and investigation staff also work, uh, our work also involves fire investigations and inspections, as I mentioned, of new and existing occupancies and the many file and plan reviews. Uh, they take more time as they come to our office these days because, uh, building materials and building, uh, prac- construction practices have changes, so we have to be on top of that in regards to our adopted codes and, uh, standards. So that, uh, takes time. It takes, uh, personnel hours and that's why when we address staffing later on, you'll see that aspect of it where it really needs to, uh, we need to start looking at expansion and being able to properly, uh, or continue to properly serve our residents. Uh, at the bottom there, CFD responded to 1,102 calls in 20, uh, 2022. And with 943 as of the 1st of December 23, we're on pace to exceed that total as well. Uh, 1,100, uh, that was the first time we'd ever exceeded 1,000 as a department. Um, when I started only, uh, 10, 12 years ago, we were in the, uh, 500 to 600 range. Uh, so you can see the, uh, the increase there, 40 to 50% call volume increase, and that is due to, uh, several factors. Uh, one, the increase, which is great in, uh, residential and business, um, fire detection systems, fire, uh, alarm and notification systems and fire suppression systems. And when they kick in, when you have, uh, small appearance of smoke and the fire alarm kicks in and it is wired through a 911 system with a monitoring, uh, company engaged, we get that dispatch. So we're seeing more of those, which is, um, important because we need to get on scene, identify what was the issue, what caused it, how can we prevent it in the future? And if it's as simple as, uh, addressing something like smoke in the building through cooking, we address that with the occupants, uh, let everybody in, in the occupancy know and, and make sure we record that going forward and we keep track of that in our firehouse, uh, records management system to identify where we've been, what we're doing and, and if there are any trends developing as a result of that. Uh, call increases inevitable, as I mentioned there, but our response practices and, and to be able to do them safely as we've done through that 1,100 calls, uh, last year and the expected more than that this year, we do respond safely and we make sure both the residents, our firefighters on scene and any visitors, of course, are properly, uh, addressed and properly and safely managed. Some of our achievements in the past year, and I tried to, uh, kind of limit this in the past year and looked at it operationally as well. The introduction of the Blue Card Incident Command System, we've had seven officers who've undertaken the system and they are, uh, probably about, uh, 75 to 85% complete right now. There is an on, uh, or an in-person, uh, aspect of it that we have to schedule off island. And we'll be looking to train the trainers to bring, uh, that back to our department. So we no longer have to incur that, uh, travel expense and the, uh, and the putting up of people as we send them away. We'll be able to bring people in. Um, I celebrated our members, our membership with long-serving promotional awards during a, uh, department recognition and awards reception. We tried it a little differently this year, was a great success. Many of our members, uh, were very excited about the opportunity to be there, share that, uh, with their fellow membership, uh, family members, and also obviously the members of council here, mayor council, that were very, um, interested in our membership, obviously, and interested in attending and supporting the department. Uh, also in the past year, we've hired a new deputy fire chief and he sits behind me, Kent Mitchell, and our new fire inspector, uh, as we mentioned, one of the members starting on the 27th. Uh, our membership safely responded to a record number of emergency responses in 2022, that 1,100 number. Um, that was tied in a little bit with our Fiona response and restoration efforts, which have been exceptional. Uh, the department members, both career and volunteer that, uh, worked through that, uh, Fiona response period can attest to the strains that were put on the department, but also the successes and the, uh, and the, uh, the morale, uh, aspects of, of building the department up by getting our membership together for those extreme events. Uh, we've also improved, uh, safety and performance when using rescue equipment following the conversion of, to next generation tools and accessories. That's most recently, uh, mayor and council once again approved the purchase of the new, uh, rescue equipment, which eliminates the need for, uh, fossil fuels in regards to oils and, uh, hydraulic fluids and gasoline to run our, uh, our pumps to generate, uh, the, uh, the pressure to, to operate these machineries as they're all, uh, now battery operated. So we're, we've looked at that and it's safer and quicker operation on scene, which is a very big, uh, improvement. So, uh, we've recorded all of that and, and identified those needs and met them. Uh, some of our challenges that we, uh, that we are currently experiencing and we're looking forward, are looking, uh, at experiencing in the near future. Uh, completion of a fire service review and fire underwriters report. We've had some difficulty coordinating that. It's, uh, the same in many industries across the board, um, in regards to some staffing issues and just the timelines of getting some of these reports done. I continue to work with the fire underwriters and a couple of other companies that can provide fire service reviews to get a timely, uh, report done for the city of Charlottetown so we can bring it back and take that next step as a, as an organization and a, and a department within the city, municipality and the province. Uh, once we get that completed, we can, uh, cross the Ts and dot the Is on an operational plan. We currently have a lack of clarity on, uh, on some of our, uh, forward-thinking, uh, ideas and, uh, and initiatives for the department, so we need some, uh, conversation with mayor and council as, as a department and from the management aspect to work through that, the operational plan and talk a little bit about our, our forward-thinking, uh, uh, goals and, uh, and hopes for the department. A new collective agreement, which is, uh, hopefully coming very shortly. Uh, once we have that in place, there'll be more, uh, obviously consistency and, uh, and reliability with, uh, the works between labor and management as we're at a bit of a standstill on a number of areas that could definitely improve the department and we're looking forward to doing that. Uh, our vulnerable, our vulnerable population responses, homelessness, addictions and mental health issues, our, our partners in the police have shared these same concerns, obviously, and they are on the front lines as well as our members. Anytime there's an incident at any, uh, encampment or a shelter or, uh, community, uh, engagement center, uh, fire is generally responding there as well, especially if there's a, uh, medical incident with our emergency medical personnel across the island, uh, taxed or tasked elsewhere, uh, that's where our firefighters are first on scene. Uh, so we have many of those responses, uh, same with some of the members and of our society that live, uh, with these current conditions. We're very, uh, uh, I guess responsive in our, in our, uh, attempts to, to deal with the population and we're very forward-thinking in, uh, how we can address that and we continually work on that as a department, uh, to support our, our, uh, vulnerable population that's out there. Uh, lack of appropriate staffing levels for management, supervisory, inspection, uh, some response and administrative personnel. Our, uh, our organization chart, uh, fully sort of identifies that in a picture or a snapshot, and, uh, I can definitely expand, uh, further on that as we progress with our operational, uh, budget preparations and discussions. But, uh, we really need to grow out in all areas of those. We have, aside from the two management positions, you know, our supervisory personnel, uh, aside from volunteers, is, is lacking. We very much need to, uh, improve upon that. And, uh, that leads to some of the things that our HR committee, for instance, has mentioned with performance management. We need those, uh, personnel to oversee people and to help those people grow and develop. Uh, we're also looking for the development and implementation of advanced technical and leadership training for all staff positions. Uh, that's once again, uh, geared towards our career members. Um, there hasn't been a real opportunity for career advancement in regards to, uh, seeking that next higher job because there has been no real succession planning or, uh, career progression identified in the department, unfortunately. That's something I hope to address in the coming years. Um, we've been, uh, and with the support of mayor and council and the taxpayers in our city, uh, a fast-growing department, our, uh, our apparatus, our equipment are top-notch. Our personnel are as well. We just need to better support them with, uh, more rounded organizational chart and, uh, better training and more training that's, that's out there that we've able to identify and bring into the department. Uh, revision of our fire protection, fire prevention, emergency measures bylaws, as I, uh, addressed earlier. That is, uh, some of the challenges we're experiencing. Once again, it takes, uh, personnel hours to complete these reviews, uh, which are extensive in, in regard to all of the codes and adopted standards. And then our work with our legal personnel down the street at, uh, at Cox and Palmer to, to identify all of these and bring them forward in a, in a better, uh, and a more useful and, uh, user-friendly format for both our membership and also the members of the, uh, of the residents we serve so that they can better identify what the department's, uh, directives or directing, uh, uh, legislative, uh, uh, materials, bylaws and fire prevention acts, uh, actually entail. Uh, the IT and GIS capability gap, identify that simply because as a department, we lack all of that internally. Uh, we need to grow that aspect. Uh, we rely, uh, 100% on our IT, uh, group over here at City Hall to help as well as, uh, our, uh, logistics or administrative, uh, personnel out at, uh, the fire, our police department. Uh, we try to lean on, uh, that support as much as we can as well, but he has a full-time job with a different department, much like our IT. And our GIS capabilities are, uh, are very minimal and we're looking to improve that. Uh, thankfully, the city has, has grown out and we have some GIS technicians in place. We're hoping to, uh, to learn from that, uh, and also grow that capability within the department. Lots to do and they're impactful. Uh, some of the things are going to be, uh, potentially contentious as we look to improve or re-update our fire prevention and fire protection acts, uh, because of the changes in both codes and standards across the, uh, the country and internationally, and because of some of the initiatives developed by both, uh, provincial and internally through the city department. Uh, so we're going to have some of those that, to discuss. Uh, programs and service levels proposed for 24, 25 is the Blue Card Incident Command System. And what that is, is an online, um, incident command, meaning you're on scene or you receive the call and you're on scene and this is where all your practices and your, uh, procedures come into play. And also after an online portion of about 60 hours, uh, the members will do a, uh, in-person two-day, uh, practical evaluation. And currently we're partnering with our, uh, with our friends over at the Riverview Fire Department who have this system in place. And it is a, uh, internationally recognized, uh, incident command system, uh, developed years ago by, uh, Alan Brunson C.D. down at Phoenix Fire Department, which has become the industry standard for this, uh, type of, uh, training. So we're very excited to bring that in. As I mentioned, we have our first batch, which was a trial batch of seven members, uh, going through the system and they should be completing, uh, just short of the, uh, new year, hopefully, and we'll have a new, uh, group on, in the, in the coming year. So we're excited about bringing that to the department and look forward to it. Uh, professional development more so and training opportunities and succession planning, as I mentioned that. This incident command system is also part and parcel of that. And we just need to expand upon these opportunities for our, uh, members, both career and volunteer. As I mentioned, years past, we probably, uh, didn't focus primarily on this in an operational capacity and we really look forward to doing that and, uh, focusing more attention on our members and how to both improve their, uh, their, uh, performance abilities within the department and also their experience with the department in, in any capacity. Uh, improved performance and man, uh, performance management practices, as I mentioned there, that involves personnel to get personnel in to be able to actually, uh, do the job, spend the time, supervise and, and, and address those, uh, issues and help people, uh, develop going forward. And also just the, uh, in, in talking with HR, developing, uh, further developing that sort of, uh, practice and, and the procedures in place for that. Uh, improved labor and management relations, that's a goal obviously of management, uh, 100%. Once we get through our current collective agreement, uh, arbitration process, which is fast approaching, we hope to, uh, re-establish open and, uh, honest dialogue with our union members to improve both their, uh, working, uh, conditions within the department and also the department's capabilities and, uh, operationally and, and, uh, administratively as well. Uh, develop that department operational plan, complete it and make sure that all members of the department are fully aware of the expectations of each and every member and each and every aspect of the department, and also what the department is going to provide in support going forward with that. And to make sure mayor and council are, uh, have a full understanding of that new development within the department. We don't currently have one. We, uh, we are working diligently towards it and this, the city's strategic plan is our guiding principle, uh, in putting that together. Uh, completion of a fire service review, fire underwriters report, um, as mentioned earlier, that is, uh, one of our focuses to get through. Um, we can still hopefully, uh, have a shot at completing it through the fiscal year of, uh, 23, 24, but, uh, it is looking more and more like it'll be early in the fiscal year of 24, 25 before we can get that completed. Uh, Ready to Respond is a new, uh, international sort of, uh, response, uh, protocol or practice and, um, emergency preparedness and, and an implementation across the country. Uh, they, we've been, uh, contacted by DRDC or Research, uh, Council, uh, to be participants in this program. And there's also aspect, aspects of it that are going to be, uh, uh, shared with environment sustainability in regards, in regard to, uh, climate sustainability throughout emergency responses, coastal, uh, sustainability as well. So things like that, that we're definitely going to be digging into under the emergency, emergency preparedness side of our, uh, our, uh, focus here at the fire department and , uh, really share that across the, uh, the department managers as well to see where that comes into play and how that can be helpful as we, uh, implement that. Uh, all of these, uh, programs, services require funding. As I shared earlier, the operational budget, um, mainly, uh, concerned with salaries and budgets as is established. And you'll find that with most fire departments and police departments across the country. There's no change or acceptance of that. But the, uh, the note I make here is that it is going to take an operational commitment and an operational cost to implement, uh, develop and, uh, be successful through all of these, uh, uh, programs and service levels that we're hoped to achieve in the coming Our top, uh, priorities as a department, and they are short-term in the most part, uh, as you will see here, but also they extend out through the next, uh, one to five years. Our collective agreement to get that settled and in place so that, uh, the, the labor workforce can, uh, can continue and have that work-life balance that management has been and, and the union members have been trying to achieve for a number of years and bring in some more supports for those personnel and more personnel for support. Uh, fire service review completed and eventually adopted by, uh, mayor and council for the city. That is one of our top priorities as well, and we'll work through that with, uh, our elected officials as we, uh, work towards that completion. The completion of our operational plan, which once again will be hand-in-hand with the top two priorities. All of these things should, uh, should sequentially, uh, come about as we work towards them. Uh, organizational staffing levels, we have to focus on that and I have to bring some, uh, I guess some either hard truths or hard, uh, hard, uh, recommendations anyway from, from, uh, management staff towards mayor and council as we look at the department in coming years. And that will be things that we need to, uh, fully, uh, maybe, uh, assess and, and breathe through in the coming days, weeks, months. And also the revision of our bylaws, our fire protection, emergency services, our fire prevention bylaw and our, uh, emergency services bylaw, our emergency measures bylaw. All of those, uh, need, uh, significant revisions and we'll be working through those and bringing them forward through the, uh, proper process as we look to, uh, to get those revisions in place and the new bylaws updated with our, in, in line with our municipal government act and our fire prevention act. And I think at that point, that concludes my presentation. Rather short and sweet. I don't have the graphics for you. I'll send over some photos later if anybody wants to see them with the fire department in, in operations. Otherwise, uh, willing to, uh, answer any questions at, uh, any council.
Chair, do you want to respond there? Chair Ramsey?
No, I, I'd certainly like to thank the chief. Uh, like every other department, there's issues and, uh, staffing is, seems to be the main one going around everywhere and, uh, and I support everything that the chief brought forward. So, you know, any other questions? Chief and I are probably trying to give them an answer. Thank you.
Counselor Mackler?
Thank you, Chief, for your, uh, for your, uh, presentation. Just, just want to come back, uh, to the fire study. Um, I, uh, I certainly know in the north of the city, there's, there's, uh, great concern and an urgency, um, on, you know, getting to the, uh, getting to the solution of, you know, what, uh, what the, uh, new fire piece is going to look like. So on this study, I understood, it, it sounds like, did we engage with a firm and get started on that study and did that get off track or is, uh, am I right in understanding that in your earlier remarks?
Yes. Counselor, uh, Mackler, thank you and through, uh, Your Worship. Um, that is the, the case. We've, uh, engaged with OPTA, which is the company that overlooks fire service underwriters reports across the country. Um, we engaged with those. We, uh, had all of our significant, uh, departments who were involved, water and sewer.
So on this study, I understood, it sounds like, did we engage with the firm and get started on that study, and did that get off track, or is my right in understanding that in your earlier remarks?
Yes. Counselor McLeer, thank you, and through your worship. That is the case. We've engaged with OPTA, which is the company that overlooks fire service underwriters' reports across the country. We engaged with those. We had all of our significant departments who were involved, water and sewer, our GIS capabilities, public works, and also obviously the fire information. We shared all that information. They had some staffing issues and also some priority projects that were reshuffled from, I guess, their national sort of national commitment as opposed to regional. So because of the staffing shortages, we had to resupply with OPTA when we reengaged with them. After several months of working through this, we had to resupply all of that same information, reengage the project a little bit due to some staffing levels and some time commitments on our end that we weren't able to meet, both with the OPTA and with the fire service. So we worked through that, and we continue, as I say, and I'm hopeful they'll get something in the early new year. But that has been the delay, unfortunately.
If I could, so the financial consequence of that, so we, let's just say, went halfway with the firm that got engaged, is there, they got to be compensated for that, and then we're starting new with another? Can you just clarify that, please?
Certainly. At this point, we owe nothing to OPTA as they have not provided us with anything at this point. They've done the initial work. There's been no site visit, there's been no initial report in regards to all the obligations. So there has been no financial commitment, or there is no financial commitment coming, and we won't have to pay two parties at this stage.
Thank you. Counselor Twill?
Yes, sir. Thank you, chief, for your presentation. Kind of a follow-up to Counselor McLeer. You know, we even embarked upon this exercise a number of years ago with making determination on a location for the new fire station. And then, I think it would have been a year ago, you made a presentation to council and said that this wasn't really the right site. And you're going to go back to the underwriters, I believe, and to further engagement with the underwriters as to where they believe, correct me if I'm wrong, where they believe that the site should go, or where we should be targeting. A new facility north of the city. A couple of things. Where are we at with the underwriters' involvement in this whole exercise? And then, secondly, when we're looking at a new fire station, I hope we're not just going to build the bare minimum. I know there's been different philosophical outlooks as to what's truly required, but I think that with the growth and development of the city, northern part of the city, I personally would like to see a facility with all the amenities, all the amenities, you know, primarily for firefighters. And then, you know, there could be a community component, because after all, it's air-fire station. So I think it's a good investment, and we should be looking at an investment for the next 25 to 50 years. You know, again, with all the property facilities, all the proper amenities for firefighters, whether they're full-time, volunteer, whatever the case may be. They make a tremendous contribution to our community, they're always there. And I just don't want to cut any corners when it comes to a new fire station. You see what Stratford has done, look at the new facility that's being constructed in Cornwall. We're the capital city, and because we're the capital city, we should be leading by example. And I want to make sure that we have all of those prerequisites in place. I don't want to, you know, someday come to evoke, well, we had to cut a million here, we had to cut 500,000 there, and then afterwards wish that, jeez, we should have incorporated that, those amenities, those very important amenities into the design of the new facility. So I wonder if you could help me with that, chief?
Good point there, Counselor Twill.
Yes, definitely, Counselor Twill, and thank you very much for your questions and also your support for the membership in the fire department through the years and continuing. That's exactly, the reasons you mentioned there is to make sure we're doing it right and make sure we're putting in what we need are exactly, and the location of it are exactly why I brought forward to mayor and council and made my presentation over a year ago to pause the actual build, the forward build of the new station in that area. The area may be yet correct. It's never been about the particular location of the station, that wasn't the reason for the pause. The pause was because we weren't, as a department, operationally focused on having a third station in a location that didn't serve geographically the city, especially as the way it is currently constructed with the two districts, and how that was going to change with three districts, who was going to respond at a department. So that meant what amenities do we actually need in the department. So those are the reasons that I needed to pause this build, to pause the forward, thinking that, because this station was originally designed and the location selected as a replacement for one of our stations. And then, after some maneuvers and counseling and discussions through preceding years, turned into a third station, but the department's operational plan did never move towards a third station and how we were going to operate that. So I needed to, as I took over as chief, pause that so we were doing right by the citizens. I didn't want to spend more money to build a station that would be either inadequate for who we needed to put in there, being career or volunteer personnel, to be in the wrong spot in regards to the overview or the redundancy between the three stations that we would have had at that point, and the overlapping there, and the lack of actual better coordination of response capabilities of what we already have inside the department. So we need to focus going forward on that fire underwriters' report. We need to get that back from the personnel doing that for us. And they're going to identify what the city needs, that was the criteria we placed in form of them, what this city needs currently and going forward with expected growth, both in the north areas, east and west royalties, what we need now, what we'll need in the future in regards to department location, numbers, and how we respond through them. And that is exactly what we're looking for.
Counselor Twill, do you want to follow up?
Yeah, thank you, chief. I appreciate that. Again, I just want to reiterate, I don't want to come to a future meeting with a resolution in front of us, and, well, we had to cut, you know, again, certain amenities, certain areas of a fire station. I want to construct something that's truly contemporary, right? Again, we can also add a community component to that facility, because, you know, fire stations are, I remember when council made the decision to shut down the Parkdale Fire Station, and I represented those firefighters, and their whole focus was in the equipment and apparatus and resources. And that was unfortunate, because that was the lifeblood of that community. And I see, I see a fire station, not just a fire station with, you know, two and three fire trucks, I see that as a lifeblood of the community, you know, and playing that very important role in that fabric. So that's what I envision, chief. So I just want you to know, from my perspective, what I see, and again, I'm going to reiterate, I don't want to come here to a meeting someday where we had to cut this and cut that and not have, I want to stay the art facility.
No, it's a good point. Counselor McLeer?
Yeah, just, chief, the, just want, the correlation, is there a correlation? Do they have to be in tandem, the study and the collective agreement? Can the study, can the study be done, like you're working on the study now, I take it, or trying to get the wheels turning on it? So could that conceivably come in before the collective agreement's possibly finished, or does one impact the other, or, any correlation? Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor McLeer. No, the fire underwriters' report, totally separate from the collective agreement, they do sort of, or will for the department as they all become complete and fall into line. Obviously, sequentially, it's going to help us develop and be able to manage that going forward, but there is nothing that the collective agreement is not going to hold up, it hasn't the underwriters, and vice versa.
Okay. And chief, again, I just put up, I had Tracy put up the challenges, that, again, looking at the marginalized vulnerable population responses, again, homelessness, provincial, intertwined with municipal issues, addictions, provincial, mental health issues, provincial. So again, Counselor Twill alluded to this under the police presentation, Chief McConnell, is that we're doing all these parallel services, but our responsibility is enforcement. And again, it goes back to the structural, the governance structural issue that we have with our tax inequity between the province and the municipalities, that we have to get a better share in order to serve as what we're doing in our communities. And I think we're doing a great job. If we look at the new collective agreement, I know that's going to add, I'm sure it will add more firefighters to our roster, so that's, again, more cost to the city, another inequity, tax inequity that we have to get adjusted through a better agreement with the province. And then, if I look at that completion of the fire service review, did you say it could be next year, '24, '25?
Yes, worship, instead of, we were hoping for, we were hoping for spring of '23, then fall of '23, now we're looking early in '24.
Okay.
And that's the goal at this point.
Yeah. And Counselor Twill and some of the other counselors that sat around this table, we were going straight ahead with the new fire station out in Winslow, you put the pause button on, but all the struggles, Counselor Twill, that we went through to get to that point, and the tendering process and everything else that was wrapped around it were controversial. So there is a design ready that's very much ready to build, but we just need to check off the boxes that the chief talked about in his presentation. So hopefully, we can get a better deal from the province to help our community be a better community and a safer community. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Just mention one more thing, I don't have the actual percentages, but just in the pre-budget survey that the residents filled out in regards to the fire service, majority very satisfied with the service delivery and the budgeting that's put towards it, but about 20% all the way along in every question regards to the fire service would be more action required or more funding required, and that's regard across the board from the public. But they do echo the same comments here from mayor and council, looking for that east-west royalty consideration for response and a new station and all the rest. So we do take that into account, and just so you know, you're echoing the same comments from your constituents, so very well.
And CAO, Eleanor, you want to wrap it up with some of your observations?
Yeah, thank you, worship. So action item similar to police, so negotiate with the province regarding the programs they offer and impacts on the city's fire services and needed funding. And then, in terms of budget priority, I think I heard completion of the fire services review and underwriters' report, and finalized future location and subsequent design process of the new fire station. Does that capture it?
Does that capture it?
Okay, great.
Welcome here, Counselor McCabe. I just, she just came in time. We're going to break, Counselor McCabe, we're going to break. Yes, you can have a cup of coffee, a muffin, and a donut, and a cookie. Thanks, chief.
It is cold in here, maybe? Is it because there's so many?
Is it because there's so many?
went over time, and we're going to restart. So Eleanor, do you want to start off with Yeah.
Yeah.
the next item?
Communications.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm going to try and keep this simple.
What'd you say?
Um, can I get the? Please.
Oh, sorry.
Normally, people are looking for me to stop talking, so this is refreshing. Now, in this day of constant and instant communications, people have high expectations of decision makers, of program managers, and really, all civil servants. And that's where this department comes in. We are a small but impactful team of strategic thinkers who liaise between the team here in City Hall and audiences and stakeholders, opening the lines of communication and overseeing the formation of relationships. We're communication specialists, including skills in the specialties of public relations, public affairs, community relations, and internal relations, just to name a few. Our function is important because clear and consistent resident communications creates a sense of community, of inclusion. It increases engagement, it builds trust as residents begin to understand what we're doing, how and why we're doing it. That trust leads to more support of municipal initiatives, and that trust, the relationships created with residents through consistent and clear communications, all of that builds our reputation, which helps us address concerns in a more efficient and expedient manner. But what does that mean? In practical terms, we're the trusted advisors, the voice of reason, sometimes the devil's advocate. In many instances, we're the city spokesperson, and we're usually the cheerleader. We work with each of the departments in some capacity, and we often provide an overhead view that can help bring the people together on shared projects or interests. Communications is the voice of the city with both internal and external audiences. Now, this is the time when I am supposed to tell you how our department supports the four pillars of the strategic plan, but we do not have the time, and I do not have the voice, to go through all the ways that comms does this. I'll sum it up by drawing a parallel between the saying of, if a tree falls in the forest and no one hears it, well, if you have a successful program or an event and you don't tell anybody about it, if it's not on Facebook, did it even happen? We're often the ones in the organization that collects the stories and the events and the plans and the people. And we wind those actions and activities around the strategic pillars to create the comms piece that you see. We work with the others to develop, to deliver the pieces that are relevant to the audiences so that they can understand what we're doing and what it means, not just to the city, but to them. So that's pretty high level still. Let's dig a little deeper. I collected these two quotes to describe two of the many aspects of comms work, and I'll just give you a second to read them. So sometimes, we fluff up the pedals a little bit. But more and more, we're about building community. We shine a light on the good, we help explain the bad, and we manage the ugly. We work with the rest of the city team to collect information and make it usable for staff and digestible for our audiences. We manage those relationships internally and externally. But to be a bit more specific, we do all these things. And we do them either on an ad hoc basis or project-based, supporting one-off and the annual events and campaigns. Now, we may be a small team, but I'm quite proud of our achievements to date. I had a quick look this morning, and the number of official media inquiries stands at 452 since January 1st. So for context, sometimes a media inquiry is pretty quick. You ask a question, I find out the answer.
Did you turn up the heat there, buddy? Jeez. Well, yeah. Yes. Eleanor, can we just start here? There. All right, yeah. So, we just took a break because it was scheduled for 10:30 and we went over time. And we're going to restart. So Eleanor, do you want to start off with the next item? Communications. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. I'm going to try and keep this simple.
What'd you say? What?
Can I get the? Please. Normally, people are looking for me to stop talking, so this is refreshing. Now, in this day of constant and instant communications, people have high expectations of decision-makers, of program managers, and really, all civil servants. And that's where this department comes in. We are a small but impactful team of strategic thinkers who liaise between the team here in City Hall and audiences and stakeholders, opening the lines of communication and overseeing the formation of relationships. We're communication specialists, including skills in the specialties of public relations, public affairs, community relations, and internal relations, just to name a few. Our function is important because clear and consistent resident communications creates a sense of community, of inclusion. It increases engagement. It builds trust as residents begin to understand what we're doing, how and why we're doing it. That trust leads to more support of municipal initiatives. And that trust, the relationships created with residents through consistent and clear communications, all of that builds our reputation, which helps us address concerns in a more efficient and expedient manner. But what does that mean? In practical terms, we're the trusted advisors, the voice of reason, sometimes the devil's advocate. In many instances, we're the city spokesperson, and we're usually the cheerleader. We work with each of the departments in some capacity, and we often provide an overhead view that can help bring the people together on shared projects or interests. Communications is the voice of the city with both internal and external audiences. Now, this is the time when I am supposed to tell you how our department supports the four pillars of the strategic plan. But we do not have the time, and I do not have the voice, to go through all the ways that comms does this. I'll sum it up by drawing a parallel between the saying of, "If a tree falls in the forest and no one hears it." Well, if you have a successful program or an event and you don't tell anybody about it, if it's not on Facebook, did it even happen? We're often the ones in the organization that collects the stories and the events and the plans and the people. And we wind those actions and activities around the strategic pillars to create the comms piece that you see. We work with the others to deliver the pieces that are relevant to the audiences so that they can understand what we're doing and what it means, not just to the city, but to them. So that's pretty high level still. Let's dig a little deeper. I collected these two quotes to describe two of the many aspects of comms work. And I'll just give you a second to read them. So sometimes, we fluff up the petals a little bit. But more and more, we're about building community. We shine a light on the good. We help explain the bad. And we manage the ugly. We work with the rest of the city team to collect information and make it usable for staff and digestible for our audiences. We manage those relationships internally and externally. But to be a bit more specific, we do all these things. And we do them either on an ad hoc basis or project-based, supporting one-off and the annual events and campaigns. Now, we may be a small team, but I'm quite proud of our achievements to date. I had a quick look this morning, and the number of official media inquiries stands at 452 since January 1st. So for context, sometimes a media inquiry is pretty quick. If you ask a question, I find out the answer. Sometimes, I even know the answer, and I go back and respond. But sometimes, these require hours of work, multiple discussions with different departments, back and forth with the reporter or their producer, and often, I'm facing a turnaround of only a few hours. But meeting those deadlines helps create a reputation of transparency with the media. We have repeatedly received the comment that the city is great to work with. The media releases, the traffic advisors, PSAs, social media posts, the website, and Charlottetown Hall all work to inform our audiences. And none of these tactics exist in isolation. They're always a piece of a bigger picture. With each project or initiative that we work on, we gather information and we shape the sentiment. The messages get slightly tailored, as does the delivery for each audience, for each medium. But all of those pieces, they work together to tell the tale that we want told. And these outputs, they are great for the tactical pieces. The numbers are good. But strategic communications also aims to influence, to shape perception and improve understanding, to help people answer, "Now, how do you feel about the city?" So when I received that feedback in the context of a candidate asking about what it's really like to work at City Hall, because you hear things, you know, that feedback, you know, people in the community are watching. And I think we know how rare it is to receive a compliment. So when we get one from someone who clearly has reservations, they have questions, but their impression of how we're sharing information is positive, that is validation of our combined efforts. That's an achievement. On the flip side, there are challenges. There's a political party, um, not here, and their tagline is that there's a lot done and a lot more to do. I try very hard to stay out of politics, but this saying is highly applicable. The comms department is starting to move forward in a consistent and clear fashion, and there is scope for more. One of the biggest challenges has been having enough of the right people in place with the right skills to do the work and begin to ease the pressures on the rest of the organization. The ability to be proactive in our approach, to create the strategy documents that will streamline our work and clarify how we can better work with and therefore serve our different stakeholders. The volume of work that comes into the department is overwhelming at times. We have to compromise. The departments have to pick up the rest, and they don't have the time, and sometimes, they don't have the skills for that. Sometimes, we decline interviews because we don't have the capacity to prepare the person. And we're often reactive to situations because we don't have that capacity to plan ahead. The corporate communications policy outlines how and when employees can respond to media inquiries, which doesn't coincide with more updated policies directing all media inquiries to comms. It also contains a few other items that just aren't necessarily best practice or necessary. The department would be better served by a modernized and more aligned document. And the website. I know that I have heard of struggles from counselors, from members of the public. But what isn't often discussed is the difficulty that staff have in dealing with it. It is not a user-friendly platform. It is not intuitive. I'll say that there are challenges for creators and end-users. And from a communications perspective, a clunky website is a challenge to our ability as an organization to inform our residents about the great things that are available for them. And if we had the staffing in a better system, we could remove a piece of that content creation and management from the departments, freeing them up to do more of the work that they excel at. For moving forward, publicity or communication supports the activities that we undertake as a department and as an organization. You'll note that many of these items come down to formalizing what has been happening and sometimes not happening because it's not written down anywhere for people to pick up and follow. Much of the plans is operational, but staffing levels impact the department's ability, their capacity to create and implement all of these initiatives. And while a new website has been indicated by a number of counselors as a priority, it will be a significant undertaking in terms of budget and people power. Which leads me to the top five departmental priorities. And these follow on from the services that the organization looks for us to provide. I read a great quote from someone named Alex Langer, which said, "Effective communication helps to keep the team working on the right projects with the right attitude." And that, that sounds good. So we're prioritizing the right people in the job and communications plans for departments and events, formalizing processes. Things happen now. We function. But I argue that as an organization, we can communicate better. We also need to look at the website and having the people who need to update it, to maintain it, know how to do those things, and a policy that supports the work more effectively. These items will provide a growth foundation for the department and for the city's reputation and streamline the workload for many. And I am happy to try and answer any questions.
Jessica, thank you very much, and
Janice.
I got Jessica on the mind. Janice, thank you. That was an excellent presentation. And I know pretty hard on you physically because of what you're dealing with. Justice McTirt, Councilor McTirt, and Councilor Ramsey.
Yes, thank you, Janice. I know that was challenging for you to get through, but we do appreciate it and do certainly appreciate the approach you took to delivering the presentation. I just, I think I just want to make note and say thank you. You know, you provided some statistics here of, you know, of over 400 media inquiries and media releases, and that certainly surrounds council and city as a whole. So, you know, it might be often overlooked, but all that work that is actually done on our behalf sometimes. So I think it's important to note, to note that and say thank you for you and your team to, and the support work that you do for council and being that conduit between media and ourselves. And so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McTirt, Councilor Kevin Ramsey.
Thank you, Mayor Philip Brown. Thank you for that, Janice, and working with you closely with Police and Fire. I know how much work you do. And it's very frustrating, and I know, once the media puts a story out there, they're never going to backtrack on things, as you and I discussed about certain things. And I watched companies again last night when we were on our tour of Simmons. And once again, it was thrown out there that we're a year behind, which we're not a year behind, we're right on schedule. And it's so frustrating how they can put something out there, and then our residents say, "Well, you're a year behind. When is this going to open?" and all that. And like, the facts are, we're right on schedule. So I sort of, like, I thank you for that, because you and I discussed that last week, I think, too, and just saying, "Why is that out there?" But it's, I wouldn't want your job because it's so frustrating to deal with the media. And they would, like, they spin it to their own sayings, I guess is what I'm trying to say. So thank you very much for all your time and effort.
Thank you, Councilor, but I do have to say, through the pair, that journalists are people, too.
Councilor Beck and Councilor Wade.
Yeah, thank you, Janice, for your report. I think just on a purely practical level, for someone like myself, it's always beneficial and informative to receive the regular attention that comes up. Could be something as mundane as a traffic advisory, which could have relative impacts. It may seem small, but I don't think you can over, I don't think you can over-communicate, especially in this day and age. Or maybe that might be up for debate as to whether we can or whether we can't. But I think for myself and for my own communicating purposes with my own Ward 3 Facebook page, for example, or social media pages, it's helpful for me in terms of helping to get that message out, too. So it's easy to just take material that's there, either in the press releases that we get or the posts that come from the city of Charlottetown, either share them. And I think it's just, I think as we move along, now that we have, you know, when you look back a year ago, it was you and nobody else, right? And we're, we've added Jessica, and we've added some other people to the communications staff who've been coming along, right, too, and have been able to supplement the work that's been going on. So I think as we move along this train and people become more ingrained in what the offerings are, I think it will only get better. So I think just to, for me, I think it's helped support me in my work, and I think, I think it helps, it can help us all. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Me? Thank you, thank you, and thank you for your course. Yeah, as I agree with Councilor McTirt, too, it's really, it's helpful for people to sometimes see actual data and stuff. I'm not a big data-driven person, I'm more about the realness. But when you see that and then you look at things like your human resource department part of communication, you see where we're really strapped. That's a big roadblock as far as being able to really do some of the things that we see as simple. Your revamping of a website. For me, it's just like, well, just fix the website and make it, make it good, as Councilor Beck said, we can never over-communicate. But understanding that part, for me, this would be a huge priority, is really, if we could do some of this work on the front end, I really believe that it would reduce a lot on the back end if we front-load heavy. And like, it's great to have charlottetownhall.ca, but then you got to go to the cityofcharlottetown.ca. I mean, it's a lot. But if it was much more functional and organized, I think we'd reduce a lot of stuff. So thank you for your presentation. I'm certainly fully behind what we need to do to do better in this area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor McCabe. I'd like to just end with the 1960s media theorist, Marshall McLuhan, who coined the phrase, "The medium is the message," by which he meant each medium is a unique type of environment whose widespread use reshapes people and culture. So I think you're following that direction, and you're doing a great job. I know you're on top of everything that we put out there. I've seen you here in the evenings working when I drop up to do some more work. But thank you again.
Thank you.
Want to wrap it up there, CAO, with your summary?
Thank you, your worship. So Councilor McCabe brought up the website. So my question would be from council, is it a budget priority, looking at the website?
Yes, yes.
Yes?
Hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our next presenter is our chief engineer, Scott Adams. Do you want to start off with your presentation?
Certainly, thank you, your worship. So I guess just to start off, I want to thank council. This past year, you guys, you folks have been fantastic. You've been very supportive of our initiatives and the work that we've been doing, and patient with us, of course, with the number of projects and the sheer volume of calls and questions we get. It is challenging at times, but your continued support and understanding has been greatly appreciated, not only by myself, but my team as well. So who are we? So I kind of want to put this slide up there to show kind of, we are fairly lean at the top, especially for the size of budgets that we're managing. We look after 40% of the capital budget this past year and about 22% of the operations budget. So we have assistant manager Joey McKinnon. We have six superintendents. One of those positions is vacant at the moment, but we are looking to fill that here shortly. Three technical staff with two engineers and a civil technician. We have four men's staff. We have 35 full-time staff and our seasonal staff of 165 approximately for summer months and about 55 for the winter months. So what do we do? We maintain and repair about 260 kilometers of streets, and that includes sidewalks and paved pathways. We also do winter maintenance on all those, on all that infrastructure. We're responsible for storm water management. That's both opened ditch and pipe networks and traffic management, traffic signals, street lights and, uh, street lighting, sorry, and signage and road markings. Urban beautification, we're responsible for flower maintenance, grass maintenance, except for sports fields and Victoria Park. And we provide labor force for tree planting and maintenance. We're responsible for 14 municipal buildings, which includes the cleaning and repairs and maintenance on all those. We do fleet management. So in our own fleet, we have approximately over 200 vehicles and a piece of equipment. We also respond for ABL management, which is installed on all city vehicles with the exception, I believe, of police trucks, or, sorry, fire trucks and police vehicles. Special events, you know, we provide labor force, or we manage the Christmas decorating around the city. And we provide labor force for summer socials, mayor barbecue, any other special events in the city that are sponsored by the city. We have parking, parkades and parking. So we have three municipal parking structures that are currently operated by CADC, but we are responsible for them, and approximately 663 parking metered stalls. We also do capital construction. So we're responsible for street resurfacing, major infrastructure rehabilitation and municipal building upgrades. We also provide engineering technical services. So we do some technical reviews for planning departments, so any new subdivisions, things of that nature that come in. And project management for a lot of just our own work, but we also work with environment sustainability and the water and sewer department. So after that mouthful, we're on to our achievements. So we're pretty proud of a lot of things we've achieved over the past year, year and a bit. We have officially occupied our first, the first net-zero commercial building on PEI, so it's a huge win for us. We have begun the electrification of vehicles and our tools. We have upgraded and improved our city-operated snow dump. That is a long-term lease for us. We have the St. Peters Road Belvidere Avenue Roundabout, which is successfully open late last year, but was finished up this year. And we've developed a number of traffic management plans, and this list will continue to grow over the next coming couple of years. But they include West Roldi Commercial Area Master Plan, University Avenue Master Plan, the North River Road Plan, which is currently in progress, and Victoria Park Roadway, which is in draft form right now and will be coming to committeeing councils here in the near future. So our challenges, I think you're going to hear a reoccurring theme amongst all departments, is the, just the limited resources that we do have. So we do have limited technical and administrative resources in our department for the size that we are. And again, obtaining and retaining staff in key positions. And the challenge right now, especially on the labor side of things, is skilled mechanics and folks who are skilled at driving trucks. We do, you know, a lot of people out there have their Class 3 for driving a dump truck or air brakes endorsement. But the challenge is they, some people struggle or just to drive a quarter of a million-dollar piece of machinery, it's just not in their wheelhouse. So we also managing the growing number of public calls, inquiries and media relations. That number seems to grow every, each and every year, just as the city continues to grow. We get more and more calls each year. And then, again, trying to maintain those existing levels of service with such a rapid population growth here in the city is a challenge as well. And lastly, introducing new initiatives and getting buy-in from staff. It's great to be creative and introduce some new initiatives. It takes a lot of work to get your team to understand the process and get that buy-in. And so it's, has been a challenging factor for us. and so it's a, has been a challenging factor for us, but it's something that we continue to work through. So proposed program service levels for, for the upcoming year. So these are some high-level items that we're looking to either introduce or augment for this coming year. Asphalt condition management, so this is an ongoing discussion point for council here. So the first thing we want to look at is our entire network, and we've never actually looked at, you know, a number of kilometers of roads that we've had, and what would take, what type of replacement or lifecycle these roads should have, and how to, how to stay on a pace in accordance with funding, I guess, funding levels, what that funding level needs to be to, to be able to replace those streets every so often or resurface them. So we did a number of calculations, and in order to follow a twenty-five-year replacement cycle, you'd approximately need four and a half million dollars per year. That's in today's dollars, so of course, we would have to add inflation and cost materials going up every year. But that's a high-level, or high-level number that we had been able to calculate to be able to resurface every road once in every twenty-five years. If you want that number to go lower, it goes up quite quickly. That number, I think, to get down to twenty, we're around six, to get down to the twenty year lifecycle, you're around the six million dollar per year number. But we think the twenty-five year can work, as long as we introduce a new asphalt preservation plan to extend the life of asphalt surfaces. And what this includes is, we do a great job of patching, but there's other tools out there that you can do to help extend the life of, of your roads, from introducing a robust crack sealing program, micro-surfacing. There's a number of different techniques out there that we could look at to extend the life of our, of our asphalt, so that that twenty-five year mark is not unreasonable. Going forward this year, so we have, we've had access to a tool, it's called TotalPave, it's an app based for your, for your tablet or your phone. And what it is, is a collection, data collection app. And it allows us, so previously, we were doing the same thing. We'd go out, we had an individual go out to each segment of the street, look at it, and give it a rating, and for different factors of the road. So what I mean by that is, we would look at, go to a segment of the road and look at, okay, does it have cracking? And then you rate the severity. Does it have a lot of patching? Yes, then you rate the severity. And based on these factors of the condition of the road, we would, we would figure out what we call a PCI, or Pavement Condition Index Number. And that's the number we use to rank our streets. The system we were using before was an in-house-made system. It, it worked quite, it did work well, but we've been doing some research on other systems out there, and this company, TotalPave, uses what we call ASTM standard, D6433-23. A long number, but it's just a standard practice for roads and parking lot pavement condition index surveys. And the system uses that formulas, those formulas that are built into this document. It's a forty-seven-page document, which I can share if you, if you folks want some light reading material sometime. It, it, it standardizes the way we review our streets and score them accordingly. And so we'll be going around, and so we're currently doing that right now. Unfortunately, we had hoped to have it all ready to go this, for today, but it is very, very time-consuming. So you'll see a number of different colors up there on the document, and I'm not sure what happened. There was a, there was a scale here to tell you what each color represents, but essentially green, or dark green means it's a high PCI rating of a hundred, or I think it's ninety-five to a hundred, so it's in great condition, no need to look at it. Light green is just below that, which is still really good, and not likely needing any repairs. And then we go yellow, orange, and then I believe red is the worst, and that's a, gives it a rating of PCI twenty to zero, I believe, as a scale. And so essentially, again, what, our two, we have two individuals who are going around working together. They're going to each street, and on each street, depending on length of the street, they stop at various intervals along that street and take essentially what we call a reading, which is snapshot in time and look around that area, look at, it looks at the factors of cracking, ravelling, patching, all those different features we look for when we're rating streets, or the condition of the street. And then it takes all that aggregate data and runs it through a number of calculations and gives us a PCI value, and that's where these color codes are coming up. So what we hope to have this all done by next week, everything rated, and then we're anticipating the, the meeting in December of council, we'll bring forth the tentative program for next year. Onto our five-year major street reconstruction plan, so this is a new five-year plan that we developed this year. The full plan will be presented to council at a, in a soon-to-be-determined date, but we'll talk about year one, what we're proposing for next year. So this, this plan is necessary to improve traffic management around the city, reduce, the goal again is to reduce our residential street usage, focus on, with a focus on safety for all users, and we're recommending to invest approximately twenty-five million dollars per year over the next five years as part of our plan, which has been an increase of around two and a half million, I think, over last year for the same account. So we're very close to on par for what we've asked for in the past year. So how do we, how do we decide where to begin? So there's a growth management study completed by CBCL. I believe the full plan will be coming sometime in the next month to council. CBCL will be doing a presentation to council on this one. It involved planning Water and Sewer Public Works and in our asset management. So it, it looks at a number of different growth areas that we're looking at. We're involved because we look at traffic and storm water management. And it provides a high-level traffic growth projections on our collector and arterial roads. And the study provides guidance on what areas of our road network need attention and when action should be taking place. So from that, we're creating master plans and looking to prioritize our budget allocations. So this is just some screenshots from, from that document, and essentially what this is showing is current conditions of traffic. So there's kind of two things you're looking at here, both the color of the line and the thickness of the line. The colored line tells us what is called a VC ratio, or volume capacity ratio. So essentially, it's looking at the number of vehicles on the road and comparing that to the capacity of that road network. The thickness of the line tells us how many vehicles are on that road. So you could have a really thick line, still be green, just because the road is already built to handle that volume of road, the volume of traffic. So as you can see now, where we get some dark reds and, and almost that brownish color, we have North River Road and University Avenue, Capital Drive area, and some areas of Mount Ever Road. Again, that's why we've started our master, our traffic management plans for these areas, University Avenue being one. We're in the process of being North River Road now, and then our next focus will be moving on to Mount Ever Road likely next year. So again, this is current conditions. If we didn't do anything, this is what it could look like in, by 2041. So a lot more red, a lot thicker lines, without doing any, any upgrades. So we would have a, a traffic headache for us if we do nothing. But some proposed plans for 2041 definitely make some improvements, and, and so that's why we're drilling down into those, each of those areas that we have concerns from this report, and starting to develop those master plans on how we are going to handle that future traffic growth in these areas. So what we're proposing for next year for Phase One, Eastern Gateway, Phases One and Two, so the carryover from this year that is starting as of today, and Phase Two is building that, the new, the new storm water infrastructure through the event grounds and the new road. The next one is Spencer Drive Extension. That is a, a key factor into improving traffic flow up and around the West Royalty Commercial Area. Water Street Reconstruction, so this is a full street reconstruction from Queen Street to Havlin Street to the Armories. We have a old clay storm water infrastructure in there that has started to fail significantly in that area. Water and Sewer also has some significantly aged infrastructure in that area, so we're proposing that as a full street reconstruction for that area. Seaview Boulevard, again, did not go this year unfortunately, just due to significant costs. We're gonna re-tender that here very soon and rebuild that street. University Avenue Phase One, I'm calling this 1.1. We've had some challenges in recent, in recent months. One of the biggest challenges right now is working with the utilities. We're having a challenge with getting information that we need out of them to look at burying utilities and how to redirect all that stuff. So it's been very challenging, and that's been what's causing a lot of delays right at the moment, is the private, the private utilities. We're still working with them, we're starting to make some headway with them on it. But what we're proposing for Phase One is to work on the AT pathway that would connect from Belvidere potentially down to Allen Street next year. And the reason why we're thinking Allen Street, talking with Bell and Lion, their major, that is where it works best for them to connect, to bury their fiber op infrastructure between those two points. So it kind of, as we look at it, it's making more and more sense that we would install the util, or the AT pathway from that section first, and putting utility corridors under the AT pathway, and then we won't touch the road next year. Everything would be in the following years. That also gives us, allows us the time to go to North River Road. One thing, as we look at, you know, all the future work that we're expecting to be doing in the next five years, one of the roads is gonna take a lot of pressure, North River Road, and the biggest bottleneck over there is the North River Road Capital Drive intersection. That is what's causing us a lot of backup, so we're proposing to upgrade that intersection next year so that we're ready for University Avenue work in the following years to be able to handle that traffic. So our five-year sidewalk multi-use pathway, we're actually moving into year three of our five-year plan that we had adopted a few years ago. So we have, will be bringing that new five-year plan with the two additional years back to committeeing council here for review, of course, and approvals. But I just kind of wanted to give council a bit of an idea how we try to prioritize streets for new sidewalks. So we kind of look at streets near schools and parks. We want to make sure children are safe getting to both these types of facilities. We're also looking at streets connecting to collector streets. Because we know there's a lot more traffic on these streets, we want to make sure walkers and cyclists are safer, so we try to prioritize those streets next. We also look at, we look at a neighborhood as a whole, and if there are streets in that area that are, you know, we're missing one street that connects two other streets that have sidewalks, it's kind of a missing piece, we like to call it. So we're just finishing, putting in that missing piece of the puzzle and finishing off those neighborhoods, and so. And then priority four is all remaining streets with no sidewalks. So that's kind of the process we go through when, when myself and my team look at our city as a whole and put together this five-year plan that we're, that we proposed to council. Those are the priorities that we keep in mind when, when selecting that, that plan. So again, as mentioned, we, we just wrapped up year two of the original five-year plan, and we were roughly on par with what we had predicted, recommending to invest approximately twenty million over the next five years, or four million a year. So here's our, what we're proposing for, for next year for streets. A couple minor adjustments that we had to do for, for year three from the original plan, but like any plan, they're all fluid, and we have to make changes just based on other works that's going on or other projects that have been bumped up for one reason or another. And so I believe, I think we have estimated right around four million for, to be able to do all these streets for next year. Other major programs and service levels, so we're traffic management and traffic comm and studies, so one of the other biggest challenges, again, residential streets. So it's kind of two pieces that we have to do, that go hand in hand. Again, we have to fix our collector road issue and improve capacity and travel times on our major through fares, because that's what's, what's happening is, as, as we get closer to that rush hour, when, when traffic gets backed up, well, drivers are, we're all human, we want to get from A to B as quickly as possible, so we're gonna take shortcuts and travel through residential streets. So we need to improve our collector roads, but we also will be looking at some traffic management, traffic comm and studies for residential streets. And this looks at in terms of raised crosswalk, button roundabouts, chicanes, and curb extensions, all these features, plus there's others out there as well, that help mitigate, reduce traffic volumes and help curb speeding through residential streets. Other big one that we're looking at bringing forward this year is a Sherwood Rec Hall. A, we've been talking with Parks, our team from Parks and Rec, looking, hopefully looking at doing a master plan for that entire site, what that site could look like at the end of the day, because us at Public Works, we see the need to begin a detailed design for the Sherwood Rec Hall. We want to be ready, if there's any funding coming down the pipe anytime soon from federal or provincial levels, we'd like to be able to, be able to leverage that. And that's one thing we have been, we have struggled with in the past, is being shovel-ready with projects, and so we want to make sure we're, we're moving in the right path. The other thing we're lurking on right now, we're trying to secure a consultant to help us with this, a municipal design guide. So it's a manual that standardizes road design and infrastructure installed in our city. So this is necessary to ensure consistency in all new roadwork and provides developers and consultants a clear expectation of work. It will help us reduce costs for the city, so prime example of this is, right now, we don't have a set standard for a, even a streetlight fixture. So a developer who buries their utilities, puts in their own streetlights, while now we have half a dozen different types of streetlight fixtures out there, and so one of two things that happen, either we have to stock six different street fixtures, which can get costly, or we don't stock them and have to wait for these parts to be on order, which can leave lights burned out for months at a time. So those are things that we're trying to standardize, reduce the number of different types of, types of features that we have, and eliminating those options to just a few. So some of the key highlights for the new developments, and again, this is pending council approval, but these are some of the things that we've been hearing from, from you folks, council, and the public. There's the option, any new development should automatically have either a new sidewalk or AT pathway in all new streets. Looking at putting buried utilities on all new streets, and as well, right from day one, traffic comm and measures should be built into these new streets. So this is a design guide. We're hoping to get Phase One done and completed by the end of March, and what that is, is essentially the cross-sections for every type of street that we would have in the city. And so that helps us define buried utilities, the corridors where everything is going to go, and what that, what the street will look like at the end of the day. The last thing under program services is bike share program. I think this was identified in the city strategic plan. We have, we're working with Stratford on this, as they've shown an interest to partner with us on this one, but we also have engaged some private stakeholders who would like to be part of this as well. We have applied to FCM and the PEI AT Fund. We've talked to both, they're very interested in looking at this option, and so we're waiting to hear back from them on funding for next year for this project. All right, so our top five departmental priorities. So number one is, is the hiring and retention of qualified staff. Number two, adopt and begin the installation of adapted traffic signal controls. So this is another initiative. Essentially, what it is, is a system to help us, it's a computerized system that will change the signal timings in real time on every traffic signal in key areas of the city. It is essentially, it's a, it's a series of sensors, both upstream and downstream of a, of a traffic signal or corridor, measuring and analyzing traffic in real time, and then it's telling the signals up ahead when to turn green, when to turn yellow or red. And the goal of this is to, you know, if you have a gap in traffic, it can predict that upstream, and can already be turning red and giving, giving time to other legs of that intersection, more green time to help them clear out the intersection quicker. It's a, because right now, what we do is we essentially set them and leave them, our traffic signal timing plans, and it doesn't work for all year round, and so it's quite challenging to manage that. The other one is council adoption of our five-year capital plans. We're also looking at working with planning department in introducing a capital cost recovery bylaw, which is essentially a, essentially the motto is, new development should pay for new services or expanded services. And, and so that's a bylaw that we've been looking at for some time on if time on if services are being extended beyond our current boundaries or beyond our current service levels. How do we fund upgrades and improvements to existing infrastructure to manage the traffic or stormwater flow from these new developments? And last but not least, continue to invest in our staff. My apologies, forgot to hit next, continue to invest in our staff and our fleet tools and equipment. And try to keep that as short as possible, but there's lots to, lots to discuss and take time for any questions, comments, or discussions.
Lots, lots of information. I'm sure lots of questions. Councillor McCabe, did you want to start off with some of your own thoughts as chair?
Yeah, well, yeah, because it was great. It's good. It's, you know, it's been interesting and a huge learning curve for me because I didn't know what a manhole was whenever I started to chair this committee. So I've learned a lot about what goes on and how they run this city. It's incredible, really, the amount. And one thought I have, and I heard it again today, and I'd love for our CAO to start looking at when we look at restructuring, there's a lot more project management, a lot more taking on leads and bigger, you know, not just going out and assessing a street and deciding what streets need to be paved, but a lot more project management, a lot more engineering-type, high-technical stuff that I almost sometimes wonder if it needs to be looked at and broken down a little bit where we have more engineer department kind of for the city versus expecting that one public works department's going to be able to maintain everything. Like, there's just so much as we've grown, as we expand, and with our development, and, and they have such an important part in all that. So that, that would be one thing I'd like somehow to be looked at when we're looking at breaking it down. Because I know they come and they ask for a lot of money, and people are like, money, money. But we learned in Public Works this year, as you know, Your Worship was, we, we pave a street and we can't get back to it for
Twenty years.
Thirty years later. And you wonder why then we're looking, like, we need to invest in, in the services and the infrastructure in order to maintain. Now, Councillor, Deputy Mayor, you remember our first year when we were first elected, and we heard if your infrastructure's good, our job's going to be a lot easier. It's when things start to break down, and we just have to invest, and we have to get out ahead of that, and we have to be in the forefront to make sure that we're doing what we can to make sure all of that works. One thing I didn't notice, Scott, and it's just a personal while I had the mic really quick, there's a lot of talk about, you know, areas of roadways and stuff, but, you know, we looked at the Norwood Road Extension Road. I don't, like, is that part of your plan? We have a road with a huge development in East Royalty, and I know it's not a, it's kind of been on the back burner, but we need that second safety exit entrance. And I didn't see it identified anywhere, but that needs to be a priority when you have residents. We had a fire there halfway up the road. If it's winter time, it gets shut down, and those residents are now trapped. But I, I need to make sure that that's somewhere for safety.
It, it is. Yes. So we're, will be included under the street resurfacing program. It doesn't need a major overhaul. There's some work that needs to be done, of course, before we pave it. But that will be all taken under the street resurfacing program for next year. So it has been, that would all be coming to council once we have that, that list of streets completed. Yes. So no, we were aware of that. Emergency services and fire especially have identified that as priority. And, and we work very closely with all our partners from every department. We listen to their concerns and, you know, prioritize what's, what's safety. And this will definitely, one of those safety matters that we know needs to be done. And so yes, we're looking at resurfacing that this year.
Thank you. And, and CAO, Elnor, because I know you'd be the winner, is there a look at restructuring some sort of work within our city organization around breaking this down a little bit?
Go ahead there, CAO.
Three-year worship to Councillor McCabe. Stay tuned for later this afternoon.
This is Monica.
I love it.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councillor McCabe, Councillor Maturk, and Councillor Beck.
Thank you very much, Scott, for your report. It's great to see that there is a lot of great work that's happening across the city. I know personally, you know, talking to residents, it certainly doesn't go unnoticed, and it's very appreciative when projects occur and people see progress in areas around infrastructure improvements, as Councillor McCabe indicated. So I thank you for that. I thank you to you and all your staff for all that great work. During your proposal, just something that jumped out at me that I wanted to chat about was the Sherwood Rec Hall master plan. I'm not sure what this is, but, you know, I, I think I publicly stated, or no, I don't think, I know I publicly stated, I'm in favor of new rink for Cody Banks in that particular area. And we had lots of discussions around our Parks and Recreation Committee and that. So not really sure what the development of a master plan for that site and the rec hall is, but certainly want to make sure it's in conjunction with any discussions that the committee may be having in regards to a potential replacement of Cody Banks in the, in the future. So I'm not sure if you're prepared to give any background on what the master plan is around that, or do we stay tuned for that?
I can't speak to particular details of the Parks and Rec in, you know, what their vision for, for the recreation facilities on that site. Again, all our, all those departments, we work very close together. And we, Parks and Rec maintains arena. We, we look after the rec center. And we have a lot of green space around there. And so we want to, from our, from public work standpoint, we do see the need to upgrade that, the Sherwood Rec Hall is the oldest facility, rec hall that we have. It is very heavily utilized in that area, and it's been needing an upgrade for some time. And now that the, the, the property behind it now has been, that matter's been settled. Now I think it's time to move forward and start developing plans. And without these plans and roadmaps for all departments, it's quite challenging to prepare for the future and budget. And so I think that's why we're pushing to at least start those discussions on what that site could look like at the end of the day, because we, you know, it may come out that the, the arena and the rec center should be connected in some way. So we want to, when we do go to build the rec center, the new future rec center, whatever year that is, then how we build it then will integrate well with the future plans for Parks and Rec and what their needs are for the, for the site and facility.
Okay. Thank you. I'm happy to hear that, you know, that is being considered in, you know, and think, forward-thinking about what potentially could happen at Cody Banks in relation to the Sherwood Rec Center, because there could be an integration, it could be standalone, it could be a number of things. So it just, it just caught my attention on that. We've recently spoke about this. I'm sure Councillor Twill would be in favor and might speak to it even more on that. But I wanted to just point that out here as, as in your plan. Thank you.
I know it was talked about a twin pad there, but you remember the landmass, Cody Banks is the Parks and Rec, Parks and Recreation Manager stated another time that the landmass is pretty finite, especially with a new school. So, and, and no doubt in my mind, the chief engineer will be working collaboratively with other partners. So they're not, we're not doing everything in isolation. It'll be a collaborative effort. Councillor Beck?
Yeah. Well, thank you for that, Scott. Guess with, when we have a budget that consumes 20% of our operational and 40% of our capital, not surprised, and there's a lot of information coming forward. We did a really good job of capturing that concisely. So thank you for that. I guess I just have a few comments. One of the things that I'm seeing around here is there's a common thread around recruitment and retention. And, and that's going from one department to another. I think that might be something, Councillor Maturk, maybe, that, that just become an added priority, I guess, in terms of how we address that and how do we, I know it's a challenge everywhere. I know it's something that jurisdictions are facing right across the country. So then how do we position ourselves to be able to attract the best talent, and not only attract them, but, but keep them here in the long run as well, too? So that's just a general comment about, that I'm kind of hearing about this. I do want to just say that I'm seeing some of the fruits of the effort in, I was out around Towers Mall there, and I saw the active transportation that went between Towers Road and Mount Edward Road. And it really well done. Like, it's really, you know, we're seeing some, you, you start to see what difference those things make in terms of infrastructure projects. So I, I wasn't part of any discussion with that, but just seeing the end result was really, it's a really nice addition there. The one other thing I'm wondering about, and I'm going back to you, we're talking about that there's going to be an emphasis on reducing asphalt and reducing costs to the city and stuff like that. And I'm glad to see that there's a lot of forethought in terms of capital projects and how they're going to be implemented and all that. And I really liked the collaboration that's going on with, say, Sewer and Water, or what you're also saying, Scott, that there's a lot of interdepartmental collaboration going on, which is so important in terms of doing this, getting things right. I was just wondering if there's an opportunity, we have a recent hire of an active transportation person in the environment and sustainability part, I think, do we not, Jessica? I'm not sure if she started yet or starting January. Okay. I'm just, you know, I, I would encourage us maybe as, if we can weave that in to help reduce our reliance on asphalt, to help reduce costs of our city, to promote that part of it. And maybe it's, it's kind of a good timing with all of that, where we are and if, in, in terms of incorporating that. I, I see that as being a good, we're at a good point in time where we're, we're kind of embarking down this road. With the addition of that particular staff person coming on, it would be something that I would like to see. I think we could get some synergies going on with that to help with our overall plan, to help reduce some of the costs of the city, and to make for a more integrated and effective network. So anyway, thank you for your work and keep up the good job.
Okay. Councillor Ramsey?
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Scott, for your report. It was great. Just a couple of comments. One, when we do over a street, whether there was curbs there or not, are we going to go with the concrete curbs in the future, or is this going to sort of depend on every street? Like, let's say they're there, and they're tore up through the years, and the street is finally being resurfaced.
Yep.
So would we replace them with the concrete curbs?
That's correct. Yes. If they've been there for forever and a day, you get a street like Seaview, yes, it's going.
If they're there, they'll be replaced.
Yes. Yep. And repaired. Yep.
And the other comment, which should probably not be popular in here, but as I've been preaching for years, that we're looking at active transportation paths and everything all through the city and everything. But as I keep preaching, there's streets in our city that hasn't been touched in 30 years and things along those lines. And I was sort of hoping that we look after the residential streets before we go spend millions of dollars more on an act, on a path somewhere. And I know it's not a popular item, but there is some people waiting for 20, 30 years that the street has not been touched. So, you know, we got to start prioritizing, like, the people that was there forever, because not everybody uses those paths. I mean, we'd like to see everybody use them, but they all don't do it. Thank you.
Okay. Just remember, active transportation pathways, a lot of them are cost shared with the province 50/50.
And just a note, too, when you look at the active transportation, other than the sidewalks on, on existing streets, that five-year plan, which is separate from the AT pathways, we're, we're doing them in synergy with other work. So a substantial reduction in cost versus just putting in active transportation. And we're putting them on key corridors. If you look at the five-year capital infrastructure plan, yes, we're, we're still focusing on the, the joint ventures with Waters Sewer and all of those residential complete street rebuilds. But the, the ones where we're putting active transportation on, those are our key, key facilities or our key roadways in, in and out of the city. They all should have a minimum sidewalk and, and two sidewalks at least, something on each side of the road for safety for pedestrians, because they are, you more and more see, more and more pedestrians and cyclists out there every day. And again, we want to continue to grow that and support the, support people to choose an active transportation way of life. And so without those facilities being built, it, it's very hard to, to support those folks. So completely understand what you're saying. And that's the challenge we face as staff is trying to balance all those needs. And yes, focus on residential streets, of course, is very, very top priority for us and for existing residents. But we're also trying to manage the traffic and the needs on those major collector and arterial roads as well.
Yes, if you don't mind. And I understand all that, Scott, too, yes. But I'm saying, like, Ward Five from Shamp, that I represent, it's an older, things like that. And a lot of those people do not use the active transportation trail, but they would still like to have their street fixed that hasn't been touched in years. You know, little things like that.
For sure.
I mean, like Seaview, when was the last time Seaview was touched?
Right. And that's why we're there.
You know, that's example, right? You know, because the sewer and water is so, in such bad shape and everything along that line.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the only reason that, like, I'm not against the active transportation trails, but, you know, by any means. But I'm just saying, we got to look after certain places of the city first.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Councillor McClure?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Brown. Just going to go rogue for a minute. As Chair of the Finance Committee, I certainly want to thank all the department heads, my fellow councillors around the table. We embarked on a new process this year. I know we're about halfway through our day. Personally, I just feel it's been, it's, it's, it's a great exercise, and I think it's going to finish out that way. So again, I'd like to thank all parties for this today. A couple of comments and a question. Scott Street, I'd like to, it's great news to hear that that's on the 20, 24, 25 capital budget. Orchard Hill Park's, I don't know, it's probably 40, 50 years. It's not an additional sidewalk, it'll be the first sidewalk in the neighborhood. So hope that, that that gets done this year. Thank you for that. Also, just again, I know there's been applause in this, I'm just going to repeat it. Great to see this year, the Allen's Creek Bridge thing get done, the Belvedere Roundabout, like, just, especially, there gives you great pride when you drive around the city, the Towers Road pathway. Again, kudos to the Public Works staff and your team. And the question I have is the North River Road Capital Drive, can you just kind of expand on what you see, hope to happen there this year? Thank you.
Certainly. I'll just comment on first the Scott Street sidewalk. So the real need for there, too, of course, yes, it's a lot of pedestrians, a lot of residential in there. So we wanted to get a sidewalk in there to feed the, to feed the need for, for the residents. But one of the other things we're looking at, too, is we look at issues or complaints that we received from neighborhoods over the years. And one of the complaints we received from individuals on Scott Street is stormwater management. So we get a lot of, the water flows down that hill and heads towards Scott Street, and because all the homes are, they back onto the water down there. So that's one of the features why we're saying, okay, we're going to come install curb and gutter and, and, and the sidewalk. It's fixing, we're trying to fix a number of issues all at the same time. And that's our strategy is to, you know, we're, we're supposed to be good stewards of our financial, or tax dollars that we collect. And so that's what we're trying to fix a number of needs with each of these, with, with each of these projects that we're, we're doing. So that's why it's on there. And we'll continue on in that neighborhood now as we go. It'll be done chunk by chunk. It's just trying to, you know, we want to balance, yes, there's a need for sidewalks in these areas, but we want to spread that, that sidewalk work out around the city. So it will be, we'll be moving forward in future years around that area as well. Back to the North River Road and Capital Drive. So likely, one of the biggest changes is, so I'm sure you attended the North River Road open house, and we looked at, there's a couple of options for that intersection. And the biggest traffic challenge for us out there is what we have, we have what we call a split phase timing. So if you're northbound, so if you're on North River Road heading either towards Lower Mall Peck Road or to Cornwall, the, the traffic signals, our program said that leg of the intersection is the only one that gets to go. And with those split timings, it really has a negative impact on the service levels of that intersection because no other leg gets to move. Typically, you like to have opposite legs moving at the same time. So that movement from the north and south directions should be going same time. So the goal will be to, to design the intersection so that we can allow north and south traffic to flow freely at the same time. That's going to have a significant impact on the traffic movement. So that's one of the big challenges. Again, I don't have all the details right, right in front of me. But the goal, again, at the end of the day, is to help facilitate that traffic movement a lot better. That, those, that infrastructure upgrade combined with looking at the adaptive signals, and that's one corridor that, we already have a lot of the hardware in place in those, in, in those traffic cabinets that control all those signals. So we think we can leverage that pretty quickly and get that, that area on that system sometime early next year, hopefully. So those are the things that we're looking at. And so the combination of both those things, we hope, is going to help facilitate a lot more, quicker movement of traffic through North River Road corridor.
Councillor McKinnon?
No, Councillor McCabe.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, Scott. Sorry I missed most of your presentation there, I was at other meetings. But a couple of questions I have. I know I've been asking most of the summer for the report, for the street assessment that you that you claimed that was done in the spring, and then I was told it was going to be presented today. Did I miss that, or is that being presented today?
So what we're doing actually, we're re-rating all the streets currently. So in the report, I talked about, we're using a, we're updating our process on how we rate our streets and standardizing, standardizing that using a program out there called TotalPave. And so by re-reviewing each street right now, the goal is to have a new list ready to go for hopefully next council meeting, that will present to council what those street ratings as of today are for, for the entire city, and then from that, we will show you what the, what the anticipated street resurfacing program will be for next year.
So it's currently being re-rated now, so was it rated in the spring?
It was under the old system. So the old system was an in-house design system that has been used for a number of years. Mr. Johnson can probably explain more about it, I think he was involved in kind of drafting it back in the day. And, and we wanted to standardize it a little bit more and follow an international standard that kind of standardizes it, gives it a little more standardization.
Okay, thank you. Second one, a couple of council meetings ago, there was discussion, and I'm not clear on it, that there's going to be a new approach to Christmas lights being installed through the major corridors coming into the city. How is that going to play out? Was there extra equipment, decorations purchased?
Good question. So we didn't discuss that here today, but I can kind of give you kind of a brief overview of what, what the intentions are. So there's kind of a couple pieces that need to take place. A, we need the, for any of the pole mounted displays, we have to have the infrastructure in place, which is power, to be able to, to power all those lights. So as we build this new infrastructure and add new poles and city-owned poles and other infrastructure like that, we'll be looking at, okay, how can we make sure we have power for lights in those areas? Whether we want to have a ground-mounted display in a corner somewhere at an intersection or the overhead lights that are approaching the intersection, the overhead streetlights, you know, we'll put a power outlet on those. So that's key, number one. So we haven't finalized the plan of what we want to go, you know, what additional lights we want to purchase for next year. Those are some of the discussions that we're having right now on what we would like that to look like, and we also need to figure out what infrastructure we're going to have in place that we can add new lights to for next year, too. So those are two things that are concurrently being reviewed, and how much money we'll be asking for will come out during the more detailed discussion of the budget time at this moment.
And Counsel McKinnon, it was brought up at the just recent Public Works Standing Committee meeting, so it is on the, it's on the radar. Did you want to finish up with another question?
Like I was through a ward last night, there was 18 standards posted, and it's outside the downtown, and I thought they were going to be spread out. I thought we had that discussion, that they were going to be spread out.
And that discussion started the other day, and it will definitely continue, I believe me, because it's not just one area, it's the whole city.
Exactly. Yeah, the whole city should benefit. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
And I think we just heard the justification where we need to have the infrastructure in place, and obviously with the lantern lights and stuff, we do own those lamps, and as a result of having that as part of our city infrastructure, they're able to put wreaths and stuff, and we all know what we're talking about. And you know, I'm really hoping that, my goal is that we start taking out, being so war divided, and when we're looking at the city as a whole, it's the same with why I'm really glad to hear that we're starting to use the standardized approach. I know we all have streets that we want paved in our wards, we all have things we want in our in-particular wards, but we have to be able to justify, because we represent the whole city when it comes to the dollars and the tax money that we're using to do our infrastructure and stuff. So Scott, it's really important that, you know, our job is to advocate, put things on the radar to say what has to be looked at, be assessed, but you have to be able to bring it back and justify why. So these new standardized approaches are great, we need to be more progressive as far as where we're going to place things, for sure. So as we're forward-thinking, we're saying, okay, if we want to have Christmas lights, as we talked about in our advisory boards, where's the accessibility lens, where's the sustainability lens? We always have to be looking at things that way. So the more we can justify the why, it just takes the politics out of the operational stuff, and I think we need to continue to do that. So good job.
Thank you, thank you. Deputy Mayor, Yankoff.
Thank you. Just as an aside, is Public Works in charge of the heat here in City Hall, because it's freezing?
What'd you say? We're trying to save money, huh? That's Eleanor Muhammad's new, new objective, save money in the front end. It keeps you awake.
I'm just wondering if you'd be able to elaborate just a little bit on the, the capital cost recovery bylaw that you're working with Planning and Heritage with?
Yeah. It's a good question. So when you look at a lot of municipalities across the country, they have, they have these types of similar, different names for the program, but essentially what it is, is as we expand further from where our services extend to now, we have to invest more money to, you know, extend, I'm going to use fire and police services. For Public Works, you know, we have to look at increasing capacity in our stormwater system, we have to look at upgrading traffic signals in our road network and things like that to be able to handle that growth outside of that area that are, we're currently funding and managing. And so it's a, it would essentially be a, potentially a fee at the time of building permit coming in, that, that an individual would have to pay, and that would go into essentially a bank account, and there will be a number of conditions set out there, you know, if you're buying a new fire truck to service that area, then you can leverage that fund. If I have to upgrade traffic signals in that area because of that growth, it can come from that fund. So there's still a lot of details to be worked out on that, but that's in theory what we're planning to work towards and to bring towards council and present in the future.
Counsel Twiele.
Thank you, Scott, for your presentation. As you know, I've been promoting and advocating for active transportation pathway for Mount Edward Road. I don't see any reference there in your plans. I can tell you, it's a very dangerous situation for the residents who live on the west side of Mount Edward Road, for a variety of reasons, you know, trying to get across Mount Edward Road, trying to navigate up and down Mount Edward Road on that side. It's very unsafe for the residents that live there. It's an older part of the city, we've got to make some inroads there. The other is Allen Street from University Avenue to Mount Edward Road, particularly the north part of Allen Street. I think we've got some work to do there, I think we need a plan for Allen Street. Again, there's no, nothing for pedestrian safety on the north side of Allen Street, and Allen Street, I would argue, is probably the third busiest street in this city. It's east-west connector from the older part of the city to Queen Elizabeth Hospital, CDP, people trying to get to Morel and Stratford as well. So, I mean, there's tremendous amount of traffic on that street, so we've got to, we've got to come up with some plans, and we've got to come up with some, an implementation plan in that regard. Now, I want to come back to what Counsel McCabe said about, got to take the politics out of, you know, whether it's street repairs or resurfacing or, or looking at things from a more perspective. I'm going to have to challenge that. We're elected to represent our constituents, we're elected to bring forward their concerns and recommendations from the community to the council table, to the respective committees, the committee structure. So I'm not sure about politics. I refer to it as elective representing your respective residents. So I'm not sure what we're talking about when we're talking about politics. I'm not, you know, when I bring forward recommendations on behalf of my constituency, it's not about politics, it's representing the concerns and the recommendations from the constituency to bring forward their perspective and what they would like to see in their respective neighborhood and community. So I have, I have to, have to take issue with that. And Counsel McCabe, you talked about earlier about new structuring, could you elaborate on what you mean by new structuring? What do you mean by that?
Counsel Twiele, I think we're looking at the big picture here. No, no, I know, but no, Allen Street, Mount Edward Road, Valley Street. What I want to do is look at, that's the purpose of this session today, and I think what Counsel McCabe stated is that we have to look more of doing business outside of that political framework. We're not abstaining or eliminating. So, so, yeah, the mixed message is that we want to stay on the big bubble. And Counsel McCabe, can you just re-
I just want, yeah, because I mean, I think I do need to speak to clarify, obviously, for Counsel Twiele what I mean. And I, what I mean is you are doing a phenomenal job of representing your constituents and bringing up their concerns and being their voice, but when it comes to deciding what infrastructure needs to be replaced, unless your residents are engineers at the City of Charlestown, they don't necessarily know the detail of the length of asphalt on our city streets and what needs to be replaced. That is their job, they're the experts that do that. So that's what I was referring to, not that we don't have to advocate to where and what. And as far as this afternoon's restructuring, I was bringing a point, what I could see in this picture was, there's a lot of project management work, and I was asking if we could explore an option of maybe having an engineering department or something that worked for the whole city rather than clumping it all in with Public Works. I have no idea, like you have no idea what we're going to be talking about.
That's on the agenda for this afternoon, but Chief Engineer Scott, just on page 87, the digital, when you said Spencer Drive Extension, you're looking at a four-lane, you know the terrain that exists between Mount Edward Road and the end of Spencer Drive, that's, that's going to be a big project.
It'd be fairly, it'd be a fair size, yeah. We're finalizing design as we speak right now.
But in terms of capital, I, I would venture that it would be five, seven million.
It would be substantial, yes, it'll be in that range of, I think, six to seven million, but there's, there's some other infrastructure that's being paid for, like the Waters Sewer will be paid for by developers in that area, as they, they're the ones that need it for their new development. So yes, there are some costs the city has to incur, but that's just part of traffic management, it's an existing issue regardless if, regardless if the, all that area is being developed or not, the city, in my opinion, we would have to do something in that area because it is a, it is a bottleneck up in that area because of the lack of east-west connectors that we have in the city, just because there's so much federal land in the middle of us that, that impact that. So it's a, it would, it's a key piece to our long-term strategy to manage traffic in around the west royalty area.
And, at digital page 91, the infrastructure install, we have to get them to standardize it? We haven't been standardizing our lights and with private developers, that's, we're just going to be starting that?
We've, we've done it in some areas, we've started in the past few years, yes, we've gotten better at it, but it's, it's been, when you don't have, you know, the staff in place to manage that type of document and to actually have that document that's, you know, reviewed on a regular, current basis, it's quite challenging to make sure that's all, that's all occurring properly at the same time. So we just want to make sure it's in a black and white document that we can refer to consistently.
So we're going to be aggressively working on that?
Correct, yes.
And the last is the traffic calming measures. Look, the roundabouts are part of that traffic calming, reducing, mitigating accidents, serious accidents. You're looking at the Chican, I know that one down in Harley Street works very well.
Yes.
I would just ask you to keep in mind scrambles that are working in other jurisdictions across the country. There was a ABC News report the other night, in, just in Houston, they had over 200 traffic deaths compared to Edmonton, that only had four, but they attributed to the roundabouts and also the scrambles. So just, please keep that in mind.
Absolutely, and if you don't mind, back to Counsel Twiele's comment. So we are looking at, my plan for next year is to look at a traffic management plan for Mount Edward Road, and part of those, we look at sidewalks, AT pathways and all that infrastructure as well. So we're looking at it, but we can't build it until we have that plan, and so that's what we're working towards.
Okay. Okay, Counsel Twiele, just one comment, is it about a street or is it about the big plan? Okay, big plan.
Let's hear about the big plan. Big plans, small plans, little plans.
We're listening.
Scott, thank you for that. I mean, you know, again, I'll reiterate that I was actively promoting that over the last, you know, number of years, and, and again, you know, receiving requests from the residents that commute up and down, you know, Allen Street. I mean, that, that street has a lot of challenges, as you know, particularly the north side, so I would argue there's a sense of urgency there to look at that. And I want to go back, I think the mayor alluded to it, was when you talked about new development and the prerequisites for those new developments, like the burying of the wires, putting in, you know, whether it be active transportation pathways or sidewalks, maybe no ditches, all those things. I would like to take that a step further and make that a bylaw. Make that a bylaw so that developers know right off front the costs they're going to be incurring, and whether or not the develop, makes sense for them from a financial perspective.
Okay, thank you. That would also be incorporated into your cost recovery policy, correct?
Lot of those will be built in by the developer of the area, yeah.
Okay, well, Mr. Adams, thank you very much. I know, oh, late question, great to see you there, Counsel Bernard, and please take the floor.
I'm just wondering, I know Scott, I missed part of your presentation, just wondering, and I know we, we had the budget for the elevator in Hillsborough Community Center, and I know had damage to the roof, and they were finishing up on that. Can you tell me two things? One, what's in the budget for the elevator for 2024, and what's the timeline look like to get it done?
So those are two pieces, I unfortunately don't have the answer right today for you, but what I can tell you is, again, we're meeting with, I think next week, I believe, we have a meeting with a consultant to review, to go back over the, the plan, hear their comments from the recent submission that we did receive for the price, and see what needs to be done to bring that budget more in line with what should be expected. Once we've changed or adjusted the scope, whatever we need to do to get that more in line, then we'll look to re-tender it. And so once I have, once we get into those more detailed discussions, I can definitely share that with you. After that meeting, I'd be happy to send you an email, let you know the update.
Okay.
I believe it's next week, I have checked my calendar.
Okay, thank you there. Thank you for your questions, it's been a great morning. It's lunchtime, if you just want to break, you want to do a summary? You want to do that before lunch?
I do, actually. Thank you, Your Worship. Initially, it's going to be quick, but a couple of them, I think it's going to require slightly more discussion, if you can put up with me just for a minute. So the action items that I heard was ensure that the projects being brought forward for budget are coordinated between the departments, for example, Cody Banks, Insured Road, and Street Master Planning incorporates asphalt reduction, active transportation, et cetera. Consider roads that have been waiting for attention for a long time, balance this with active transportation projects. Another action item is the traffic signal reconfiguration to occur on Capital Drive and look at a bylaw that addresses the engineering standards. So that's an action list I have.
And-
For the budget, oh, is there another one? I was going to say for budget priorities, the street resurfacing program and major street construction list, a reference in the presentation today will be coming forth in early December, so there should be some robust conversation around that. And in, in the theme of that, and what was asked for the workshop today, was to come forward with lists for the opportunity for different elected officials to consider adding different projects to the list. So what I heard today in regard to the sidewalk and multi-pathway list for 2024, 2025, is the proposal to add an active transportation trail on Mount Edward Road. So what I need is consensus, or not, of whether that gets added to the list this year, so that's the first one. And then the second one is active transportation trail on the north side of Allen Street.
Yeah.
And the discussion around this would be very similar to what should be having in early December in terms of the larger road conversation in what's priority.
So that corridor, Mount Edward Road, is going to be redeveloped, that's what you talked about as one of the future projects, correct?
That's exactly it. So we need to, we need to take, we know that there's concerns from the growth management study that's been done, that you'll see, I think it's next month, but I think they're trying to finalize the date on that one. So we know Mount Edward Road has some traffic concerns. So based on that, we say, okay, that, we prioritize that road to take a deeper dive into the challenges that we have on that. Because, you know, we may need to look at widening an intersection, widening, you know, a certain section of the street. And the challenge is, if you build a multi-use pathway now, we don't know where the width of the road's going to end at the end of the day, how many lanes we need to account for. the day, how many lanes we need to account for. So we could essentially have to remove a section of multi-use pathway if we build it today or tomorrow, or next year in a few years to accommodate the future roads. So that's why, that's why we're trying to develop all these master plans for these roads. Doesn't mean we're going to build them next year or the year after, but it means that as projects come up or funding becomes available or we see a, you know, an intersection that really needs big attention, okay, well, we can build it to that plan and we can make it as wide as we need it to accommodate the future expansion of the rest of the network. And so that's why I would hesitate putting it on, you know, my recommendation is hesitate putting it on for next year until we have this master plan of what Mount Edward Road will likely look like or could look like at the end of the day.
And that's the same for our east-west corridor, Spencer Drive, Allen Street?
Exactly.
And the other, the other corridors, North River Road, Lower Malpeck Road, University Avenue?
Correct.
Malpeck Road, St. Peters Road, Longworth Avenue. Okay. Again, this goes back to this structural governance issue, the tax inequity between the province and the city. Again, we have to make our case that we need more funding and to ensure that we keep up with the demands on our roads, streets, pathways and so forth. Counsel Twiele, Counsel McKinnon, Counsel Bernard.
So I'm somewhat confused here.
Yeah.
So what we're discussing here today is determining what's going to be in the budget?
No, just priorities.
Priorities. So, so, so the priorities determine right here as opposed to going back to the respective committees?
Oh, no, you'll be going back to committees.
Oh, it's going back to committees.
Because we have to ensure that each of the departments can look at the overall priorities and how we're going to budget for it. If we're going to budget for 10 more police officers and we're not getting any more funding from the province in our tax equity formula, we're going to have issues. We're going to go into deficit financing, which we can't.
I understand. Okay. Just to know, I'm glad you brought that up. I understand what you're talking about, getting a better deal when it comes to equitable taxes and whatnot.
Yeah.
But when we're talking extra police officers and what the province is doing, bringing in these other things, that's above and beyond, Mr. Mayor. That's above and beyond an equitable tax, tax, tax return on, 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 on the property taxes that the residents are paying.
But we're talking about public works right now.
Now, I know we're talking, but you keep referring to that. So I wanted to make sure that the clarification is in place because when we, when you talk about the police officers that, that I talked about earlier today, that's above and beyond.
Yeah.
Okay?
It's part of the structural governance issue.
Yeah, I know.
Anyways, what's your public, what's your public works issue?
Well, my, my, I just want, I'm, I'm not sure, like, we're establishing priorities. I thought today was for information sharing. Now I understand it's establishing priorities. So I'm not really sure how, how this is working.
Well, I understood it as today's session was to look at the overall priorities for the whole city, not just ward by ward, but each of these priorities will go back to the standing committees' response for parks, recreation, public works, environment sustainability, water and wastewater.
Okay, just to follow. But the reason why I bring it up, because the committees didn't meet to look at the priorities to bring them to council. So how is, so how is it we're establishing priorities when it, when we didn't, we didn't do this at the committee level?
Because this is trying to get out of the silos. So we look at the whole city as, as, as part of our strategic priorities going forward. And again, it's not taking away the, the powers and the responsibilities of the standing committees. This is just a form to look at the big ideas that we want to go forward with. Like, that's why I said Spencer Drive, four-way, four-way lane, that's going to be a, a huge cost. 10 police officers, more, more firefighters, that's going to be a huge cost. And that's why we need to get a better tax equity formula with the province. Okay. Counsel McKinnon, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. I think Counsel Twiele kind of explained what I'm looking for here, but when she's saying priorities, CAO Eleanor, so if we have active pathways that we want on the list, does that come up at another time that we somehow bring that to the committee? Or do we mention it here now?
That will come through the committee, the standing committee response for act, active transportation pathways, which would be environment sustainability and public works.
Okay. So I went forward with that. And another question for Mr. Adams, I'm hearing rumors, since Mount Edward Road got resurfaced, it's, it's beautiful. It's very nice. But people are saying now that city is going to expand Mount Edward Road over to Royalty Junction. Is there, I don't know where this rumor came from, but.
That's news to me. I, I've not heard that one, nor have we explored it anytime soon. So I'm not sure the rumor is. Now, the only other thing that mentioned, now you mentioned Mount Edward Road, there's a section that we didn't pave this year. We didn't pave from Maclear down to the bypass. And that's just because we know there's a developer, I believe they already have a permit for it, and it's the Tim Hortons. DP Murphy owns the property there. Part of their approval was to put a left turn lane in. So they're going to this year, design and build the, widen out the road, and then we'll pave it, the entire road next year. So that's part of, that's why we stopped there, was just, just cutting costs or make sure that they weren't ripping up what we needed or what we had did this year.
It must be my Facebook, so it's true, true.
Huh?
If it's on Facebook, it's true.
No, people came to my door and asked, so.
Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. So mine's along the same line too on the priorities. And I think what I'm hearing is a couple of, you know, my understanding was this would be priorities similar to, and we're talking public works, so it may be Spencer Lane or, or the improvements to University Avenue, but not so much of priorities or projects that ward counselors would like to have as part of the budget. So I think there's that distinction we're trying to make today. When we're talking priorities, are we talking everybody's priorities? Are we talking what the department feels as a priority and we would, we would prioritize that? We're just bringing what's on the books, what they're looking at now.
These are suggestions, recommendations going to each of the standing committees. No one's-
When I, when I, when I hear the CAO saying these are action items, that seems to take, those are, those are firsts?
No, action items to take back to the standing committees for discussion, debate and decisions.
Okay. So on the robust conversation on the street road construction rehabilitation, what do we mean by that? Or you say there's going to be a robust conversation on that? Which to me, you have professionals rate all the streets and you come up with a rating list and notice the streets get paved.
CAO?
Thank you, your worship. So really, the point of this was, is to bring forward the standards for discussion. And sometimes there is, you have decisions that are based on science and rationale, and sometimes there's political pressure in the community to get something done. In which case, bringing this all, the list forward, it gives council the opportunity that if there was a political hot potato, and it has been for a while, to add it to the list. So by doing that and having the discussion upfront, we know that budget is, so say, I'll just use Allen Street because that was what was brought up. So say Allen Street was actually quite important to a number of people here today. It's not on the list based on, on the science, but maybe it was really important and needed to be moved up the list. Then council has a discussion about whether it's important or not to council, not just to the individual. Then it goes back through the committee and the committee's going to have to have a discussion about what's on that list and is there going to have to be give and take? Or do we do the whole list and it's at this cost and are you prepared to pay this cost in this area and you trade off somewhere else? Or do you make cuts from that list itself? So it's trying to get an idea upfront of where council's priorities are as a group so we can be a little bit more accurate as we're bringing things through the committees and ultimately to council in the end.
So that was one of the reasons we brought in the-
Just press the button there. Okay.
That was one of the reasons we brought in the rating system in the first place because some of these streets were not getting looked after, that there was no votes on. So the idea was to take that political pressure away unless what you just discussed. And I mean, so I think that became part of the conversation once the rating list came out. There's streets that are on that rating list that Water and Sewer is going to do a project within the year or two years, and they're going to end up cutting that street up. So we'll not pay that. And then that goes to the next one down. I just think that if we start having discussions on one particular street in an area, if council starts passing that, it starts to open a can of worms. I mean, I think the process is there. People will ask me, when's this street getting done? I can look at the list and say, here's the list that's getting done this year. Here's where we are in the rating system. That makes sense to them.
Yeah.
It's worst first.
Broad strokes. Counsel Bernard.
Yeah, I just want to reiterate. I think, you know, I understood today to be a holistic overview of the desires by each of the department areas for their priorities to give council an opportunity to see that collectively and collaboratively so that we can make better decisions going forward at the committee level and then ultimately at the decision level when we go to pass these budgets. And then, you know, so I respect that everybody has a number of priorities they think they need to come out of their area and we will, you know, be able to achieve most of them hopefully, but not all of them. And I think that's what I took from today's meeting to be. And I appreciate that the CAO is, is trying to summarize our discussions at the end of each of the presentations, but I never anticipated that as saying that is the priority that we decided. I think it was just summarizing what you're hearing here-
Good point.
-as a collective voice. Am I correct in that understanding?
Yes. CAO Eleanor Muhammad.
So I, I think, thank you for that. I think I want to clarify that the items that are being captured in terms of action items are actually more operational items. So that's not something that has to come back to committee. It's just kind of, it's on the list for us to, to work on. The larger ones, the budget priority ones are, yes, they're partly a lens that we have to look through in terms of looking how this budget is, is developed. At the end of the meeting today, this list, what I'll do is I'll circulate it to the group and say, this is what was captured. And that's why I've been checking in the whole time. You know, here's, here's what we'll move forward with for now. And again, it's, it's big picture. As a group, we're thinking this is a priority. But again, once it gets down into those committees, maybe another piece of information will come up and you'll change slightly. We, we just need to know, like, where to start from.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. Counsel Beck.
Yeah, I think Counselor Matartz, I would echo your sentiments 100%. I was just going to say much the same thing. I think what's important here and what I'm finding beneficial in this is the broader, broader picture understanding, understanding of how we get to arrive at certain decisions, understanding that we had, I didn't even know that we had an in-house system developed for roads.
Yeah.
Worst to first, whatever we want to call it. That's now been revamped. So now we've got a more scientific approach, which is undertaken, which will be coming back to council here in December. You know, these sorts of things I think are important for us to understand because I'm not sitting in in public works meetings. I'm not sitting in on environmental and sustainability meetings. I'm not sitting in on finance. But at the ultimate, the end of the day, I, we have to make informed decisions. And I think this is very helpful in terms of making a better informed decision. Might be a little bit of a, little bit of, no, not turf war. That wouldn't be the right word I was looking for. I was thinking like sledging through things, you know? We have to get through some, a bit of quicksand here to get to the nice shiny beach. But I think it's, it's important work, legwork to get done in terms of understanding. And I think this is a good step towards doing that. And just, again, being into, going through last year and going through this year, I think I'm better equipped coming into budget decisions this year than I was last. Of course, everything was new last year, so you didn't really know, didn't really know anything. Not that I know a whole lot right now either, but I think I'm a little further advanced than I was a year ago from, from this. But anyway, I think this is all part of the, putting the puzzles together and hopefully coming up with the right decisions at the end. Because I think that's really what we want to do is we, we want to provide the best governance that we can.
All of us.
And if we can, in order to provide good governance, you have to be well-informed.
Yeah.
And I think this is part of the important process of what's going on here today. So.
And our CAO came in after the budget process was dealt with, with Donna Waddell as the interim CAO. And now this is her opportunity to put us all on the same page, looking at the big priorities. It was done, as you remember, Counsel Bernard, Counsel Twiele, 2001, when George McDonnell brought us into this chamber, and we spent a whole day on a Saturday doing this, went through the same process, looking at all the different departments, what they're doing and what they want to do for the next fiscal year. So same approach, and I think we're going down the right path. Counsel Bernard.
No, actually, I was just going to say that very thing. And you and I had talked about this the other day. I guess we kind of got away from it. There was a lot going on after this last election. But that's, we usually do after elections, get together and the departments come in and explain what they're doing, what their priorities are, what their responsibilities are. So. And then you can see it now, when you've been here for a while, you can see the new guys, some of the questions they're asking. So yeah, this, this makes a lot of sense. So.
And it's great for the departments because all the departments are in the same room in the chamber here. They're listening to everyone else, asking for their wants, looking for their needs. And time for lunch. Can we take a recess? Oh, did you want to summarize? Or did you already summarize?
Half an hour.
What's that?
Half an hour and you put the lunch.
Okay. 30 minutes. Add 10 minutes on the back.
Three grams.
So that's, did you put that, is that on recess?
Yeah.
Counsel Twiele?
The audio.
Nobody's talking.